Because I know I don't have a coach. Oh, we're doing the best.
Are we looking over there?
Are we on?
Oh.
No, but it shows.
Let's watch that.
I just can't watch TV tonight.
Oh, I do.
I haven't seen her in thirty years.
Okay. Good, good timing.
I guess we've got to be on.
Right. Well, he's... He's... It's a sign, I think, that...
I think we're on. We're on, okay.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this school board meeting of January nineteenth, two thousand and eleven. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And with that, Melissa, would you mind leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll continue by reading our district mission statement. "The New Market School District is committed to the highest standards of quality education by creating a safe and successful learning community that embraces diversity in response to the social, emotional, intellectual, and physical needs of every child. We are dedicated to fostering links to the broader community to ensure that students develop lifelong skills, enabling them to be contributing and productive members of society." Again, welcome, and it's great to see such a good group here this evening. This is the point in our program that we like to have opportunity to make recognitions to various folks in our community. Jim, could you...
Yeah, let's go down to the phone. How's that?
The recognitions tonight are a bit belated, obviously, because we're recognizing folks that participated on the Epping New Market football team and took it all the way to the championship game and had just an awesome season, one to remember for the rest of your lives, I'm sure, fellows, it will be. And so we wanted to bring you here and recognize you for that success, even though you don't win a championship, just being there is going to be just, and the whole season, just a memorable experience that, you know, you do us proud because you're not only great athletes, but you're really a great ambassadors for New Market. And so we want to bring you here and say that and appreciate, show our appreciation by having you here, recognizing you, giving you a little thank-you gift to remember this night by. And so I asked Principal Andruski to also say a few words before we introduce you individually.
Good evening. Congratulations, guys. It's a pleasure, since this is the group that really started football here in New Market for the four years and carried it through. And I couldn't be prouder as a principal to watch you guys play, you know, the semifinals and then make it all the way to the championship. And it makes us even more proud, as we have two students here who are the all-time leading tackler in Epping New Market football history, Robert McLaughlin, and also the leading rusher in Epping New Market football history, Danny Espo. So, very proud on those personal notes, well. So, congratulations, and you guys definitely earned this night.
So, let's just call you up and list it here and give you our personal congratulations. Kevin Clardy. Daniel Espo. Nick Espo. Christian Fillion. Robert Wheeler. Carl Lundoff. I got that right? Robert McLaughlin. Patrick Stein. Jacob Valinsky. I also want to say, I'm so appreciative that you're all here. This is why I got delayed from end of season to tonight, just finally getting a night when everybody could be here. So, you know, you finish the season as a team, and you're here tonight as teammates, too. And so it's great to have you here. What we typically do now in this part of our meeting is we take about a five-minute recess, and it gives individual board members a chance to meet with you and offer their personal congratulations. And then, unless you want to stay for another couple hours, it gives you a chance to gracefully exit the room. So, again, thank you for coming tonight. Congratulations, guys. Okay, well, recess for five minutes.
Thank you, Dr. Hayes, for making that happen. It was great to see those guys. Okay. So, moving on here, here's my formal welcome to you all. And this is the time in the agenda that we set aside for folks to make comments. So, if anyone would like to make any public comments. All right.
Ree Cooper is here, and I think... Ree, are you still going to say a few words?
Waiting for some kids.
Oh, okay. Yep.
Please come on up to the microphone. Like knitting, yes.
Tell you what. I tell you what. No, no, no. Come up here. Come up here.
Speak in one of our microphones.
Speak in my microphone.
There you go.
This fall, we held our second annual penny harvest. Our goal was to raise two hundred and thirteen dollars to buy a new deluxe dry erase teaching easel for Ms. Stowe, our art teacher.
We raised three hundred and twenty dollars this year and would like to present Ms. Stowe with this check for two hundred and fifteen dollars so she can purchase the easel.
We will be donating the remaining one hundred and five dollars to the Seacoast family Promise for their food bank.
Presenting me the check.
Oh, that's the real check.
Oh, I get the real check. I must say, I'm very excited to get one of these big checks. This has never happened to me before. But I would like to thank you all, thank the Harvest Fund, Penny Harvest Fund, for choosing the Art Room for your fundraiser this year. I'm very excited to be getting the new easel, which will be nice and sturdy and white and a center point for teaching. And I thank you all, all those little pennies. It's so amazing. Don't ever think, you know, a little penny is nothing, because look at all the little pennies and look at how it added up. I'm very excited for all that work you did. Thanks a lot, kids.
Nice job.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
It's a link-together program, and I think it's...
That's a lot of good stuff. It's going to be hard to talk.
I know. Yeah.
The age of those kids, are they first kindergarten?
I didn't make note, but I would say that those were first through fourth graders.
First through fourth. I think it was first through fifth, actually. I think there was a fifth grader up there.
Well, that was terrific. Nicely presented.
I know.
Nicely done.
Good job, Scott.
Link together with Ree Cooper.
I know. You've got to give Ree a lot of credit. She does a great job with the kids, and obviously, they're motivated to be part of it, so...
Okay. We'll have to move on to things much more mundane, such as minutes.
The fun part is over.
My apologies, Jen.
All right. I will make a motion to accept the minutes of January fifth.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Not on that one.
Because they're beautiful.
Very nicely done.
Okay. Hearing no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And there was a non-public session that same evening.
I'll make a motion to accept the January fifth non-public meeting minutes.
I'll second that.
Nothing...
Discussion? Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Yai, yai, yai. Then, the next minutes are from January the ninth.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes of January ninth.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
I'll have to abstain, because I left at nine forty-three, after that town portion of the meeting, so I wasn't here for this discussion.
Duly noted.
I just have one thing that I just wanted to make a little bit clearer. On the second page, third paragraph, it starts with my name, Kelly Foster, and it says, "Kelly Foster said that the state also has its own rules for school building aid." I think my meaning, and I don't know if this is really a big deal, but should say something like, "Kelly Foster said that the DOE also has its own criteria for school building aid and that we would have to meet to be eligible for it once and when it becomes available again." That's just a little bit more of a clarifying... Does that make sense?
Yes.
Any other clarifications or comments? Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And one abstention, and no more, no room for nays, so... We'll move on then to the meeting on January tenth. We've been meeting a lot. And just for clarity, I'd like to make a quick paraphrase of this meeting. This was an emergency meeting that occurred at approximately nine PM in the junior, senior high school conference room. An emergency meeting which was for the purpose of potentially taking immediate action with regard to a last-minute proposal by the Teachers Association to settle not contract negotiations. So, with that said, is there a motion regarding those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have to abstain again. Oh, yeah. Well, I'm just, I could be wrong, but in just following the regular way that the non-public minutes are written, isn't there something in there that should say, "No action taken"?
There is, and I have a feeling Penny didn't process that part. So, probably at our next meeting, you will have the non-public minutes.
So, this is the public part of it?
Yeah. You have to report out that, even though it was an emergency meeting, you have to do the public piece. And in an emergency meeting, as Cliff just paraphrased, you have to state the purpose of it publicly.
Okay.
And then you deal with it. And for us, it meant going into non-public immediately and then coming back out at the end.
Okay.
And so, so these are the minutes for the public portion. For whatever reason, you don't yet have the non-public, but they'll probably be at your next meeting.
Okay. All right.
Any other thoughts on that one? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? One abstention. Okay. Let's on to committee reports. Melissa, we have you first. What's... How's finals going?
Midterms.
Midterm. Well, finals for the first semester.
They're technically finals, yeah, for the first semester. They're going very well. They end tomorrow. We have our G Block exam tomorrow morning, and that closes out our first semester of this year. And grades also close tomorrow, and they should be on the portal next week, some point next week. Penguin Plunge is again February fourth, and our Senior Halfway There Dinner is January twenty-fifth. And tomorrow, Outing Club leaves for Gunstock, and that's grade six through twelve, so I think you can join anytime during the year and get on those trips. Boys' basketball is seven and oh, and they're playing Epping tomorrow at seven PM in Epping. And girls' basketball is four and five, and they're actually playing right now against Epping. It started at six, and when I left, it was a pretty safe bet that they were ahead, so that's good. And Winter Track has a meet this Sunday, January twenty-second, and they also have their state meet next Sunday, January twenty-ninth, and I heard from one of the track runners that everything's going well. And we also had our tours last week for the building with the community, and I participated in the first one, and I thought they went very well, and they were very beneficial, and everything went smoothly.
Nice.
That's everything.
Super. Thank you.
Can I ask a question about this halfway there dinner?
Yeah.
It's the first time I've heard of it. I think it's a great idea, but what actually happens? Who puts it on? How's it sponsored?
It's put on by student council, and all of the underclassmen, student council put it on for the seniors.
Nice.
And so it's free for all seniors, so if you have any seniors or you know any seniors, encourage them to go, and you get a free meal and games, and it's just a celebration of being halfway done.
Where is it?
It's in the cafeteria at the high school.
I love that.
It's at least the second year.
Yeah, they did it last year. I think they had some refinements to make to it this year to make it more successful, but this is the second year they're doing it.
Wonderful.
Any other questions for Melissa? All right. Okay, Dr. Hayes.
I have, first of all, several announcements relative to what's happening at the elementary school, so let me go through those. There's a lot that's happening that's good stuff. So, first of all, the jump rope big show is this Sunday, January twenty-second, at two-thirty. Jumpers should report at two-ten. And they're keeping an eye on the weather, obviously, it sounds like Saturday is the more compromised day. And if it's necessary to reschedule, they'll send an alert now message to elementary parents, so everybody will know. The Grade Three Immigration Simulation is scheduled for Wednesday, January twenty-fifth. All five Grade Three classrooms visited the mills in Lowell, Mass. this Tuesday, and also some went yesterday, yes, Tuesday, and some went today as part of this study of immigration. And I went to that immigration simulation last year, and it's terrific. It's a lovely experience that the kids have. The Elementary School Spelling Bee is scheduled for next Friday, January twenty-seventh. Fourth and fifth grade students will have an opportunity to compete with their peers for the title of school champion speller. Spelling Bee will begin at one PM. Mrs. Lapoli's class will be doing their annual Living Wax Museum, also on January twenty-seventh. Each student studies a famous historical figure, and then they write an autobiographical presentation which they present to the Wax Museum guests as they filter through the exhibit. The Wax Museum will take place from eight-thirty to nine-thirty AM. The Elementary Band and Chorus will be hosting their annual pancake breakfast at the elementary school this year instead of in a restaurant. The breakfast will be on Saturday, February eleventh, in the school cafeteria, starts at eight AM, and will also include a raffle. The event sponsors, excuse me, supports the band and chorus trip to the Great East Festival in May.
Is that in the cafeteria?
I think so. Yeah, it didn't say that, just said, "In the school," but I assume it's the cafeteria.
Yes, it is.
Right? Sure. All right. The next, I've given you handouts on the next issue that I want to speak to in my report, and it'll be kind of a lengthy piece, because it's really important to me that I read through both of these documents. I've given you two documents and a sketch, a drawing, if you will, of a portion of the high school building, and it relates to the high school facility. So, I want to read through it. It's important that not only you hear it, but the folks at home hear it, and I've written it out, so I have a real clear message. "On Wednesday, January fourth, at the public hearing on use of the open space bond fund, I commented that I had just learned that day from our head custodian, Bob French, that he had observed brickwork separating from the building and a plaster ceiling that was falling down onto a dropped ceiling in a classroom in the older portion of the junior, senior high school. Upon receiving this information, I immediately requested from our architectural firm, Harriman Associates and Engineers, that a structural engineer inspect these issues immediately and report back on the safety of the building. The structural engineer inspected the identified areas on the next day. His preliminary report was that there was no imminent danger, but that further assessment needed to be completed, and they would get back to us. On Tuesday, January seventeenth, I met with Dan Beeson, our architect, who works for Harriman, who gave me an oral report on these conditions. The brickwork is a matter that needs to be addressed, but it can easily be delayed until warmer weather in the spring or summer. The crumbling plaster ceiling in the classroom was a higher concern, because it appeared that the suspended ceiling, and perhaps piping and light fixtures, had been affixed to the plaster ceiling rather than a permanent structure. And this weight over time had taken its toll on the plaster ceiling. Not only was it crumbling from the weight, but the strapping it was affixed to was pulling away, and the more this progresses, the more force it places on the remaining fasteners holding up the ceiling. I immediately met with our head custodian and directed him to begin an inspection of all classrooms and hallways that had suspended ceilings to start, and to start on the first floor of the old building. This work was being done on the evening of our public hearing on the FY-13 budget. His report the next day, January eighteenth, showed that this problem was widespread on the first floor of the old part of the building. Beyond having crumbling plaster ceilings, he discovered electrical wires which were not attached to anything and which were not capped. Since our electrician was in the building on another matter, he asked the electrician to determine whether the exposed wires were live or dead. Some of the wires were live. I forwarded all this information to our architect and structural engineer, and again, this was yesterday. On the next day, today, I met with Dan Beeson first thing in the morning. He had joined Bob French for an early morning inspection of the conditions. Dan and I agreed that I needed a full assessment by the end of the day from his structural engineer. Dan involved the head of the Structural Engineering Department at Harriman, and later that morning, a telephone, later today, I should say, a telephone conference was held with Dan Beeson, Business Administrator Joan Laporta, Structural Engineer Scott Homer, and Structural Engineering Department Head Eric Greven. After much discussion of the conditions, Mr. Greven recommended that we start repairs in the three most affected rooms as soon as possible, those being the Art Room, the Foreign Language Room, and Room 106, which I've since learned is a mathematics classroom. We would then need to begin a program of repairing all other affected areas. He said he would summarize his assessment in a memo which would contain some of the photographs used in the assessment, and after I'm done with this, I will read his memo. We also talked about the possibility of the ceiling plaster containing asbestos and the risk presented, because the ceiling is crumbling throughout that area of the building. We immediately contacted the Scott Lawson Group, environmental health and safety consultants from Concord, New Hampshire, and asked that they assess whether the plaster ceilings in question actually contain asbestos. They arrived at the school shortly after one PM, took samples, and returned to Concord to run tests. They reported back around four PM to say that none of the samples contained asbestos. They will provide a written report in a few days. The safety of all our students and school personnel is the highest priority in our school system. We take this responsibility very serious and do not hesitate to act when safety is put into question. Therefore, I've informed the high school principal that three classrooms are to be closed immediately to begin remediation of the ceiling problems in those rooms. The three rooms are Room 100, which is Foreign Language Classroom, Room 101, an art classroom, and Room 101... room 101, an art classroom, and room 106, a math classroom. Classes from these rooms will be held elsewhere in the building until further notice. I've asked Dan Beeson to coordinate this remediation work and assist us in developing a plan for remediation of the remaining spaces where there is evidence of similar inadequate construction. I want to take a moment to commend our head custodian, Bob French, and architect, Dan Beeson, for their professionalism and diligence to pursue investigation of this matter in a timely manner. They truly have the best interests of our students and staff at heart. To, to back this up, I want to read the memo that I received late today from, from, I think it's Bob, Eric. Eric Greven, who again is a, is a principal owner of Harriman Associates and he's the department head of Harriman Associates and in his, he's department head for the structural engineering department. Dear Mr. Hayes, At the request of the school department, our structural engineer, Scott Homer of Harriman Architects and Engineers out of Manchester, made a visit to the Newmarket Junior Senior High School. He investigated a report that plaster ceilings were cracked and sagging in the original section of the building which was constructed in 1925. During the visit, it was found that the existing ceilings were pulling away from the supporting floor joists above. This is due to the weight of the ceilings and utilities that are suspended from them and because inadequate fastening methods were used. There is a distinct danger of a progressive collapse of these ceilings. This condition is occurring in the classrooms of the first floor. It's imperative that repair or stabilization of the ceilings commence immediately. Because some rooms appear to be in worse conditions than others, it may be possible to start remediation on those rooms first and work progressively from room to room to stabilize the ceiling assembly. These rooms consist of original plaster ceilings which have had suspended acoustic tile ceilings added with lighting and other utilities included. The original plaster ceiling was the original, the original plaster ceiling was the original finished ceiling and serves as a fire barrier to the spaces of the second floor above. The plaster was applied to wood lath and furring which was nailed to the underside of wood floor joists. When the newer suspended ceilings, et cetera, were added, the supporting hangers were fastened not to the floor joists, but rather to the lath of the plaster ceiling. Over time, the weight of the ceilings has worked to draw the nails carrying the plaster lath out from the joists, resulting in the sagging and cracking of the plaster ceilings. Eventually, the nails will be withdrawn from the joists enough to allow the complete separation of the ceilings from the supporting joists which will result in collapse of the ceilings. Because of the age of the original construction and the condition of the original plaster ceilings, it is recommended that the plaster materials be tested for the presence of asbestos. The results of this testing will have bearing on the nature of any remedial work that is to be performed. If asbestos is found, additional measures may be required to control contamination of the school building. Work in this area will have to be done under negative pressure to keep unaffected areas free of dust and debris. Since the plaster ceiling is probably required as a fire barrier, there will likely be a need to patch or replace the plaster to provide a proper fire protection capacity to the floor system as required by the building code. So, then you have three pictures attached that were taken when, in, in just in that room 106, which is when we did the initial inspection. And if you orient it properly, you can see the strapping, if you will, and it was attached to the strapping and so the strapping and the ceiling are pulling away from the joists and they're pretty dramatic photographs. So, we've chosen the three classrooms which clearly are the three most serious and, and then we're less concerned about the others, but clearly the same conditions exist. And we're going, we have inspected them and we have seen concern, areas of concern, but we're addressing these first and then we'll begin a progression that covers quite a few spaces in that school.
How many?
I don't have the full assessment because we've looked in the old building first, but we have other ceilings to look at. And this evening, when I had a phone conversation with Dan Beeson again about this, he said that although the appearances on the second floor are that those ceilings are fine and intact, however, you've got to expect the same construction. Instead of affixing it to the joists, if it's affixed to the, to, to strapping, that we have to inspect, we have to cut through the ceiling and inspect to see how those have held up. So we still have more inspection to do, but we really believe we, we zeroed in on the worst case situation in the school and we're addressing it as soon as possible, but it's just not safe to have people in those three rooms is my judgment. And that's what happens starting tomorrow.
Is this the entire drawing of the, the oldest part of the building?
Yeah, I, it is and, and the, the rooms, again, as you, you know, as people, as they face the building, the left-hand side of the building is the, the 1925 structure. And on the left-hand front corner is the, is the foreign language room, room 100. And then right behind that, going down the drive there, is room 101, which is the art classroom. And then again, as you face the front and you move four classrooms down, you see 106, which is a math classroom, and that's what started this whole investigation in that room. So those are the three we're looking at, but each, each of the rooms in this area, I think circling all the way down to the media center had various levels of concern where they had a drop ceiling. Today, there was some discussion about the hallway by the media center and so it's, it's a big project that we're, that's ahead of us.
Do we have any estimates?
I have no idea. I have no idea what it will cost. We, you know, we'll get one as we develop this, so what I, when I spoke with Dan this evening, we talked about approaching it in the same, same fashion that we did with, with that maintenance building out back. We, he hired a company that was really the, the construction manager, a firm that he's dealt with a long time and frankly, they did a terrific job for us. They saved money, I think, along the way. They're very cost-conscious. And, and the nature of this remediation involves several different trades. There's a lot of work. You need people whose expertise is demolition. You need people putting up gypsum board. You need electricians doing wiring. You've got to hang, take a ceiling down, probably the suspended ceiling down and then put it back up. There are different trades involved here and so the idea is that, and I said to him, I said, look, we, you know, we get them as a construction manager, I'm fine with that, but then we go out to, to advertise for the trades. We try and get as much local as we can to, to work on this project, but it's going to take us some time.
Do we have to go out to bid for the construction manager or is that something we don't, we can just do our own?
I think, you know, you could, but in an emergency or, you know, short term, Dan wouldn't recommend it. You don't have to. There's no law requirement.
All right, that's what I was wondering, if we were required to.
Yeah, no, there isn't. And, and we're, we just finished work with them and we're very pleased with what they did. I had no problems doing that.
But then the trades, we, we'll have to try and get.
Sure, you know, I mean, we're going to hire electricians, you know, Dan and I talked about, we already have an electrical firm that helps us a lot in our school, so who knows?
And they know our building very well.
They know our building, so that's probably who's going to get it. I'm not sure how local they are, but I, I know that's who we've used and, and again, there's, there are other trades involved and I don't know all, all of it, but so, so they're going to take that over for us, put it together and then Dan's going to put together a long-range plan and it's probably at that point that we'll be able to see what the total cost might be. Because we're still in the process of inspecting other parts of the building, but areas where we're, you know, less, have lesser concern, you know.
So will this, there'll have to be a plan, I imagine, put into place to try and, I mean, I guess I'm trying to, is the demolition and stuff going to take place during the school day? I mean, how are we going to stop all of this from interrupting instruction in all these other classrooms?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think you'll have to do some work during the school day. The demolition may be off hours because that can be noisy, but the other stuff probably will be school day stuff. It wouldn't surprise me. Yeah, and again, they're just working in a room. Granted, they'll be going out to trucks and getting supplies and materials, but.
Imagine it could be loud ripping things down and.
Putting things up.
Putting things up.
Yeah, yeah, it could be. It could be, but.
I mean, I'm not saying that's a reason to not do it. I'm just saying it's unfortunate that.
We'll look at that. We'll look at that. I mean, clearly, when we did the sprinkler system at the elementary, they were, most of the work was done off hours, as I understand it, so.
Still doing it, staying there tonight, yeah.
Right, yeah, so.
In a school that's already very, has very limited space, I'm curious where these other, these classrooms are going to be moved to. Can you tell us that or if you haven't even figured it out yet?
I just, I let the teachers know that are affected those rooms tomorrow, so they can plan, start taking stuff out. I chore this weekend to go and make a, a new schedule for the start of second semester with these classes and that.
Okay.
Tonight, I took these two doctors, I emailed them to all staff so that everybody has this story in their hands and
Okay.
and they can see the photos for themselves.
Do you have a sense of the, I guess, the plan? You know, looking at the, the photos, it's, it looks like there's a clear separation of the furring from the joists.
Right.
And it looks like they were, that was just nailed up with, with straight nails.
Nail, right, I mean, yeah.
It looks shiny, but, you know, I'm wondering if that all needs to come down or if that can be screwed up?
Uh, right now, the, I understand, I have is it could be either. But, but we're going to bring in the, you know, the experts in this field to give us the best advice. But, but, because, because at times we've had that discussion that you would put the gypsum board, leave the ceiling as is and just put the gypsum board and, and, you know, screw it right into the joists and then hang everything else properly and that that should be able to hold the ceiling in place, but again, where you've got these gaps? I mean, and I'm not a tradesman, but if it were, if it were my house, I'd be taking that ceiling down personally. That's my own personal feeling, just to draw some comfort as to what the remedy is. But I'm going to wait to hear from the experts on how best to approach this.
And that's what we'd be relying on the construction manager for essentially, or him in consultation with the architect?
Yeah, right, and then they'll, and so then from there, they'll say, okay, well, this is how the work schedule would go because then they'd have to figure out, you know, when they approach these others, they have to give some scope of the work to be done. I, I tend to think we'll probably be taking those ceilings down and rather than leaving them in place, but I don't know that for certain.
Do you have a sense of the timeline when that scope of work would be written, completed?
I don't. Obviously, it's urgent. I mean, that's, you know, and again, I gave Dan credit here. I mean, he has been like a hawk on this, you know, he's as sick to his stomach over this as, as we are. And, and, you know, wasn't feeling comfortable until it got addressed. So he stayed on top of it and made sure his colleagues stayed on top of it. And so, obviously, there's an urgent nature to get this done and move on to the other things.
There's quite a weight there.
You're right. Especially if you, you know, again, the ceiling alone has weight and you look at the strapping, you see how it's pulling apart. But add to that the weight of light fixtures, the grid work and the whole ceiling with the tiles, imagine the weight of that. I, I, although I didn't see it in any of these reports, I had heard that in some places, you know how when you extend pipes over a long run, you put supports and I think some of those supports were hooked into the plaster and so. It's not a, not a good situation and, and I'm also, you know, incredibly concerned about having live wires just lying around up above people's heads. And so we've got to get that dealt with right away. I don't quite know why it is what it is, except the observation was that the wiring is extremely old wiring. So it's conceivable that when the new lights and whatever were installed, I don't know this for a fact, but it's conceivable that then they, that old wiring was part of the old lighting system and it just got left where it was and maybe people thought they were all turned off, but.
You go ahead.
Mr. Chair, can I jump in?
Please.
So I'm sitting here stunned at the magnitude of incompetence whoever was responsible for that work. So I have a couple of questions related to that. A, is this reportable to the state in any capacity with licensure of whoever, whatever company provided this work to us? B, can we seek compensation damages for not only the facility, but putting our kids in danger? And you don't have to answer any of this right now. I'm just like, ah.
I've got two answers for two questions.
And is the state of our facility, does, does the state need to, does it rise to the state level that it just seems like we're getting hit time and time again and our major concern was the programmatic impact on the kids? It's really taking it to a different level at this point where, and I, I don't mean, I'm not pressing a panic button, but do we close the school and for a short period of time and get a state waiver or something for the days? I'm just, this is just totally off the top of my head. To ensure that everybody's safe? I, I.
Well, up until, I mean, this was not a fun day.
No, I can't even.
What are we doing? Let's get answers and keep pushing the problem. Up until getting word, what, at four o'clock, when we got word on the asbestos, I, I had two, two options depending upon how that turned. If there was asbestos, yes, I was ready to close the school. And I know the next steps. The next steps are to seal off the affected areas, to, to secure that, but then you have to go to the other areas of the building. You have to go through and do a special cleaning of all that areas, HEPA filters, so it probably wouldn't have been school tomorrow and I don't know about Monday. That, you know, depends on how quickly you can get people in to set up for that remediation work and then also do the cleaning of the areas we want to reoccupy. So, so yeah, I was, I was ready to do that and, and, you know, if there's any relief in this, it was that report about no asbestos. I mean, I, I'm going to still stay after them. I want to, I want to, I want to see their report. I want to ensure what kind of sampling they've done and maybe there's a need for more sampling. We've got to stay on top of it, but at least, you know, that avoided the closing of the school. I did get people in our, in our office to start digging through the records and seeing if we can find out when this work would have been done and who was responsible and, you know, was there a building permit? How, how did this get to be how it is? And, but I don't have answers on that yet. It was a little hard to find all that information because it was done, obviously, some time ago. This has all happened over time. And, and, and it's not like people just constructed it this way and probably at the time, this kind of construction was acceptable. It probably met code. Who knows? But it doesn't meet code now. We know that. So I am investigating that and whether there's any ability to go back and recover anything, if you will. I don't know that. There is language in, in the school building aid law that, and I forget the exact words, but although there is a moratorium on school building aid, there is an exception to that and that's for dealing with emergencies in buildings. So we may have an opportunity here for school building aid. When I talked with Dan Beeson about that, I said, and does it translate perhaps into a new building? And, and what he said to me, I mean, because, you know, we've talked, why not?
Hey, you've got to ask the question.
And he said, what he said, I mean, he didn't say, oh, come on, Jim. What he said was that that appears to have been what happened in, in Unity. Unity had to tap into that emergency nature and their solution was to go build a new school. So I'm going to be investigating what that means for us. I'm certainly hopeful that whatever we spend on it, it may mean, you know, some, some funding, you know, from the, to help us for that from, from the state. I don't know. I've, I've read the language only a couple of times, but I don't recall anything that talked about a, 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 a limit of how much you spend, so hopefully the state can be a partner for us in, in addressing this because, you know, we have, what, $100,000, I think, in that.
Yeah, that'll be.
In the, in the maintenance.
In the maintenance account or is it?
Hundred and seven.
Hundred and seven, that's what I thought. And so I, I think this is going to chew up a lot of money.
Yeah.
Be very honest with you.
An emergency for the boiler.
Well, that's what Joan reminds me every time I say that. She says, don't forget, you've got a boiler to have to deal with, so it isn't like you want to expend all of that money, so, so we've, we've got a challenge and I have no idea what the cost may be. the cost may be. But we'll, we will find that out and deal with it. Obviously, we have to deal with the situation, and then we'll be approaching the state to see if this qualifies for any funding from the state.
How are parents gonna get the information about the situation in the building? I'm sure you're already working on a plan, or not?
Well, I, I don't know. I mean, obviously, I'm sure parents are perhaps buzzing about this right now. I, I.
I just want to make sure it's accurate information.
That's why I read through all of this.
Right, right. But not all parents are listening, unfortunately.
No, they're not.
Website?
I can put these on the website. I, I know somebody who is active on the, the Facebook page.
Great.
No, this is not you.
Oh, me? Oh, okay.
Oh, you're off the hook. But I, and so about, you know, about fifteen minutes before our meeting, I emailed her with copies of both of these, and I said, "Look, about 7:20, I'm gonna be reading these, and after that, get it up onto Facebook."
Good.
And, and so, yeah, I will try and get these posted tomorrow on our website, so people can read through these reports. I mean, I, you know, again, it's difficult, but, but I think we're really being prudent to assure student safety, and we will continue to do that. If conditions change, we'll react to it quickly. But right now, based on all we know, this is the right, the right approach to this, to ensure student safety, and obviously continue education for our kids. And we'll continue to do that.
Okay. I was just gonna say, I, I think it's, it would be very helpful to post that Facebook or website, because I think, not only does it get the accurate information out with the newspaper article as well, but I think for the people that may think that we may be overdramatizing the situation, or may insinuate that we're misleading because of the whole facilities discussion, I think that that will nix that thought.
There is nothing manipulative here. It's about safety, and you just look at those pictures, and you understand, as Chet just did, the weight that's pulling on those. You know there's a problem.
Can we give those pictures to the paper?
Uh, I can email it. It's all in a PDF, but I gave him a hard copy tonight. So he's, he's got that, and if he needs an email, I'll send it to him.
Would this, I mean, in terms of notifying the parents, I mean, I love the Facebook, I love the website, but we do have to realize that there are not, not everyone is on those mediums.
I suppose we could.
I think it either rises to the level of an actual letter, which you have to depend on the kids bringing home to their parents, which we know always sometimes end up in the backpack. But at least, we've tried. And does it rise to the level of an alert-now kind of thing, to even say, "We sent a letter. Check the bag," or whatever?
Yeah.
Just, just so that we've covered all of our bases, to make sure that every household that has a student in that building is notified in some way or shape or form, I think.
You can do that, right? Have somebody take care of that for you tomorrow?
We can do a letter and do a bulk mailing, get it out, and it's, it's.
Yeah.
That way, we're not, we're not bringing it to his hands.
Yeah, I mean, we love them, but they have a lot of paper that they're, that gets lost.
Jim and I will coordinate what that will go out. It might not go out till Monday to have it all out, but there will be a letter explaining that, and hopefully I'll have a schedule.
Yeah.
For the classrooms, because art is affected, that's the major concern. Because I have ceramics.
That's not an easy classroom to relocate, really.
No, it's not. So I can move it a couple of times for industrial arts, when they're not there, which is great, up in this messy space, but we're, we're in trouble. So I'm gonna have to play with some classrooms.
And one more piece of logistics is, okay, so you gotta move all the furniture out in order to do the work in the rooms.
Where do you put it?
We've already made it clear, there's no storage there. So, you know, Chris and I talked about, you know, one hope, that if they do one room at a time, then the other two can absorb the furniture, and, but.
Is there room in the maintenance building?
No.
I don't even know. I mean.
Well, well, the maintenance, the maintenance building is vacant because there's been a problem getting the garage door. That's why it's still the way it is.
Oh, 'cause I drove by, and I saw it was, didn't have anything in it. But I'm sure there's plenty already slotted to go in there, right?
Yeah, there is, yeah. It's, it's, right, because it's replacing a lot of other storage, so.
Okay.
That was already out there. But, so anyway, we've got ideas.
Might be much more expensive, too.
One room at a time, yeah.
You know, if, if the Democrats come in on Monday and do room 100, and then on Tuesday, and, and, or, you know, come back the next week.
I think it would be two. Because if you're a tradesman, you wanna, you're there for the day, and you can probably hit all three rooms. So I think we're gonna have a challenge, but we've gotta find someplace.
Run a truck body or something.
Where it all goes. Right, maybe that's what it is. You know, a container, and, yeah.
Wow. And you feel comfortable that even the rest of these ceilings, you know, the three need to be closed, but the rest of these ceilings?
I do, I, I do. You know, you know, Dan, you know, Dan went around this morning again, and, and took a look in all of these, and, and that's his reading of it, that we have three that are clearly more problematic than the others. So, these are the three.
Okay. But we don't even know about the rest of the building yet, because that's still happening, right?
Yeah, but likely, this is the area of greatest.
The worst, yeah.
Concern. And, and we've done some looking in other parts of the building, and have not seen issues. We just haven't finished the building, so. But I'm, I'm expecting that this is really the source of where it's at, and not elsewhere.
At one of our meetings, a gentleman stood up and gave you a business card, offering storage units. This may be the time that, I mean, he offered it for free, so I don't know if that's something we want to explore.
Yeah, I do, I think I still have his card on my desk. I just.
All right, anybody out there?
I had intended to call him back then, and never got to it, but now's the time.
Anyone?
Contact us.
Maybe he will.
And then I really want to express my sincere gratitude to Bob French.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
Because of his dedication and his thoroughness and his job, I mean, and taking it very seriously, he really prevented a potential situation for us.
Right, right.
Well, and I think he was really diligent, and, I mean, he was there for the public hearing. I saw him there that night. And he was, what, you said, doing stuff that night?
And honestly, just like I get accused of cooking these things up to get a new school, so was he. And.
People were accusing him of that, I know.
Or accusing him, or accusing him also of, you know, like when I, when I showed the, those photos of things being stored out in hallways and all that kind of stuff, it was, what, the backlash for him became, gee, you guys aren't doing your job. And that wasn't my point. My point was that, that we just have no place to store stuff, and people out of necessity are trying to get it out of their way so they can work. And that's, that's really what's at work there. So no, he deserves a lot of, a lot of credit here for doing the job right.
Shouldn't no way fall back on him.
No, he's, he's doing the job right, and I told him that today. And, and so he, he needs to be commended and supported.
He's a blessing.
Yep.
I'm a little bit beyond words with, with a lot of this, but while we're on the topic of extending gratitude, I'd like to commend you, Jim, for taking a drop-everything-else sort of approach to, to this. It's, you know, when we interview, unfortunately, we've done way too much of interviewing superintendents through the past, through my tenure in the school board, and it's not gonna happen again for a while.
Thank God.
But, you know, the, one of the questions, you know, we've commonly asked, is you've got this crazy scenario, and, you know, what do you do? And the, the right answer is, student safety's number one. And clearly, that's the direction that, that you're going in. And, you know, having my own son that's, you know, in these rooms, it's, I feel confident that, that we're taking prudent and not overreacting or, or underreacting steps. So, so thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I think we gave you one of those scenarios in your interview.
Might have.
So thank you for coming here.
There's experience.
Yeah.
More experiences than I, I wanna think about, but they're there. Thank you, though.
And Joan also.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, right. So, you can't make this stuff up.
Oh, my God.
You can't.
And, you know, I, the art room has, you know, you just mentioned ceramics, there's a kiln in there. You know, we're talking about fire stops being missing, and it just scares me. It just really scares me.
The kiln room, much, again, the, the plaster ceiling acts as the fire protection barrier, and, and for whatever reason, in the, in the art room, there's very little of that plaster ceiling up above. So if you go through, up through the tiles, you just see bare wood. And so here, you've got kiln and bare wood that this time of year is, is all dried out. And it's not a good, good situation.
Now, the other, the foreign language room, is that the only room that we have for languages right now? Like?
That's the French room.
It's only, so Spanish is in another?
Yeah, French room, right.
So this is French that's impacted?
Yep.
Okay.
All right. Feeling I need to take a breath before we move on.
That's just part of your superintendent's report.
I was gonna say, that, that's enough for a superintendent's report.
Wow.
Sorry.
Is there anything else from your superintendent's report that, I mean, I've kind of?
That's it. I can roll right into this other facilities report that I've gave you.
Okay. Please continue.
All right. As, as I think you know, last evening, the town council supported the, our ability to, to use open space bond funds for the purchase of the four properties, and across from the junior, senior high school. And so that warrant article will go forward. And I, you know, obviously, I didn't work too much today on purchase and sale agreements, but I, I'm still getting, I'm still very close to having them done. And my hope is to be able to make an announcement sometime, hopefully early next week, but I certainly believe next week. So you'll have, the public will know exactly what the properties will cost, and what the purchase and sale agreements look like. And, and, and so it, I think it's, it, it's been tough talking about it as a, as a range, 1.2 to 1.5. So I really hope we get them all signed and, and get, get the information out. So I guess, I expect that next week. Since we last met, we had the Q and A public meeting as well, in the music room. And that was a terrific evening with Chris and, and Dan Bisson as well, answering question after question after question, and then being able to get it out on Channel 13. So people have told me that the Channel 13 presentation came out pretty well. I was kind of concerned about that, so.
Audio and stuff.
Yeah, you know, it was very difficult talking into a mic when you didn't get a sense of the speakers. And so I hope it came out well. And facilities committee meeting, I, I have been waylaid, but I, I do intend to have a facilities meeting soon. I, I think it really is important we get back together. We've got some things to deal with. And hopefully, I'll find a date at the end of the month, if not early, very early in February, to bring them all back together. So. And that's all I have, I think, yes.
I have a question. I just think it might be a good idea, as we go through this process, to have possibly another Q and A at some point, where we can bring the community in and keep, you know, as we keep going.
Yeah, I agree with that, yeah.
And I think it's a, very important to just keep getting that.
Right.
Feedback and letting them in. Because it's, as we know, for us to even understand the whole process is pretty, I mean, there's a lot of pieces to it.
A lot there, yeah.
So, to continually keep that, I, I mean, we don't have to plan for it yet, but just let's keep that in the back of our mind.
No, I think that's real important. And, and maybe in a different times, you know, some during the school day, you know, there are people who might have the time better in the day than at night, and so.
I know the basketball season's going on, but I don't know if there's a larger place we could hold it from. The last time, it was pretty, I know that's, that's what you got, right?
Yeah, but, you know, I mean, it, it gave people a sense of that music room.
It did.
And that's a challenging role.
It did.
Period, so.
But just keep that in your.
Yeah, I will.
Head.
And that's a good point, because somebody at our public hearing the other night stated that they had no idea what was going on with facilities. So if we continue to get that word out, and maybe we need to think of different media to do that as well, because this parent, this person apparently didn't have any indication of what was going on with our plans or discussions. So I think that's an important point, is continually getting that information out there.
You know what I really liked, too? Now, this is kind of on the topic, the, when we went to the public hearing, you had that big thing beside the road that was flashing, town meeting, public. I don't, that is great. I don't know whose idea that was, or.
Police, probably.
The police.
Yeah.
I think we need to do that. Is there, is there another one that we could use? I'm just thinking the deliberative session, because that's an important thing, too. We, we need to, I think, coming into town from a.
There was one, it was the.
Was there? Okay, all right. I just, I love that. I mean, it's, just the, the commonplaces, because, I mean, we all, well, not we all, but I pass that school every day. But not everyone comes by that school. So we have to kind of try and target, like, the main street of the town, or someplace to, to get the message out. I think that's great.
Regarding the finalizing the number, purchase and sales agreements and, and all that piece, we need to get to a point where that warrant article one has a number there, not a bunch of.
I agree.
Bunch of Xs.
I agree. And I think that'll be next week.
Okay.
So that's before the budget committee meets again.
Right, that's, that's really.
I, I agree with that.
A bit of it. I just want to make sure that, you know, we gotta, I'd like to have the budget committee have the opportunity to have a number on that, that they can, they can.
Totally agree.
Take an opinion on.
And they're meeting the 26th.
Right.
Twenty-sixth, yeah.
No pressure.
Yeah. It's not like you've been busy or anything. Okay, wow.
All right. Any other questions regarding the superintendent's report of facilities?
Not at this moment.
Okay, so now, program.
Yep.
Welcome to Mr. Andruski, our junior senior high school principal. Got a presentation on Phillips Exeter partnership?
Yeah, I'd like to share some good news. This year, I was approached by Arthur Prue, as many, many, many of us know. And he said that there's a really cool thing going on at Raymond Middle School, where Phillips Exeter is coming in and doing a summer enrichment program with selected students. Would I be interested? And I said, "Absolutely. Give me the contact information." So I contacted Ethan Shapiro, who is the director of, of summer school for Phillips Exeter. His job is basically to go out and recruit around the country for students to come in at $7,000 to be there for the entire summer. Part of what they do is outreach, too, to inner-city schools. And they're finding, you know, that it's being, they're very successful, but they wanted to branch out and say, "Why, why aren't we helping those communities that are directly, you know, related right to us?" New Market being one of them. So we started discussing. I said, "Well, what would this be?" And he said, "We'd like to take, you know, kids, you decide which grade level, and get them excited about, you know, enrichment and opportunities of, of instruction in a different method." They use the heartness method, which is where a teacher sits at a table, and students are responsible for their instruction. They are responsible for the discussion piece, the homework, and the teacher is really just a facilitator and an active member. It really helps students think critically, you know, a skill that, that, you know, I think all students need. And then more and more, he talked about it. I was, you know, it was, it was an opportunity that, you know, I thought that we needed to explore. And then I came down to price, and how would they do it? So basically, with the way that the program would be outlined, is that we'd, we offer to, this current year's eighth graders. And the reason why we chose eighth graders is they're going into high school. And I want to get these kids excited about their own learning and what high school opportunities go, so that they can go to further their education. Then we chose 10th graders. The reason we chose 10th graders is because 11th grade is, you know, that, that pivotal year where they start looking at schools and start, you know, really having to master their, their craft to get ready for colleges. In Raymond, they just, they chose 7th and 8th graders. And again, it was, it's a different philosophy of what we thought. So we chose 19 10th graders, based on PSAT scores, NEWA scores, KCAP scores, and teacher input in both English and math, because those would be the two areas that we'd offer to students. We did the same thing with, with 8th graders, and we offered this to 16 8th graders. And what I did is, Mr. Shapiro came in last week, and met with, we met with these two groups for a half hour, and discussed the opportunity and what it would entail. The, what it would entail is, is 12 sessions through the month of July, pretty much a Monday, Wednesday, Friday schedule, 50 minutes in duration, with about 50 minutes in homework the following day. And students could take math, and again, it would be based on our curriculum, and then materials and state, state standards that a Phillips Exeter teacher would bring into that classroom, and also for English. And again, they'd look at what we teach, and, and some of the novels that we use, and, and supply that in their summer enrichment program. Cost is $125 for 12 sessions. And a student, if they do not qualify, if we know that there are students on free and reduced lunch in our school, it's $25. And that's for each class. So we presented it to the kids, as I said last week, and students are walking out of there, you know, very excited about, you know, the opportunity to excel for, for our higher-level kids, you know, providing more for them. We have a parent meeting set up on February 13th to get the parents involved. A letter went home with those students about the opportunity. And, and the best thing is that the classes would be taught right at New Market. The kids aren't going to Phillips Exeter. So their teachers would come to New Market and provide those, those enrichment classes. And again, they'd take about no more than 12 kids for each class, so we'll be first come, first served for those 12, because that's really how the heartness method works. As a follow-up, they'll get to go to Phillips Exeter for a day, and sit in on their classes and participate as part of their classes, in their full summer program that they have. And then the added piece, they're willing to come in over the summer and do professional development with our teachers, so our teachers can understand how to do the heartness method, which, you know, currently, we have two teachers that, that use it with some of their higher-level classes. And it's a really neat and unique way for, for students to really get involved in, in their own learning. And if you ask any high school student, "What do you want? A student voice. We want to be active in our learning." This method really, really, really sells that, and I've, I've observed it myself. And it's just really neat. So I think it's an opportunity that, you know, only enrich what we do in our, in our own own school system. With no way are we replacing it and saying, we're, we're going to become Phillips Exeter. I mean, I think we'd all like to see the best and the brightest in, in our school, but it's just an opportunity that I thought, bringing to us really can enhance, you know, some of these kids that we'd like to see have further opportunities once they leave our school.
Wow.
Fantastic.
That's cool.
Great opportunity.
Yeah.
For those kids, I think, yeah.
Would there be a cost for them to come and do our professional development?
No. That's all part of the $125.
Wow.
I think we might have to coordinate something with Pat if, if a teacher did something on their own time. But again, that would be their teachers working with our teachers, you know, in the summer, or our teachers going to Phillips Exeter and actually sitting in and watching their classes and doing professional development with their department. So, so it's a really neat partnership that I think we can get a lot of mileage out of for both our students and our staff. So it's, it's, you know, it's a no-brainer for me.
Yeah. Is it a voluntary professional development thing?
Yeah, it's for, it'll be open for anybody that wants to take it.
Okay.
And again, what Mr. Shapiro will do after the parent meeting, he will hire those teachers. He has a ton of teachers that he uses currently through his summer school program. He'll come to a staff meeting, and he'll, he'll talk about this opportunity with my entire staff. And then he'll get sign-ups, and then they'll go from there, and they'll set up a professional development schedule for the summer that teachers could, could be part of.
Great.
So you're talking about this year's 8th grade.
Correct.
And next year's 9th.
Correct. Yeah.
And this year's 10th grade.
Correct. Yeah. Again, those, those 10th graders that are testing, you know, next year's our 11th grader. So that's why we try to, to pick them and, and, you know, we just felt it was the best fit for our kids right now.
Is there a follow-up on this for the following year and the following year?
Yeah, it, talking to Ethan, if it goes well, this is a partnership that he would extend out year after year at the same, same opportunity.
That's the important thing, right there.
Yeah.
And a wallet chance.
Exactly. You know, and we'd use pretty much the same criteria, and, and, excuse me, it'd be up to us decide which group we want to put in there, you know? So that's, that's what we've got in store.
Could you do some kind of, I mean, I don't, I don't know, it could be very subjective, but I would be interested to hear back from the students after they go through the process, like an evaluation of some kind of what they thought about it, what they liked about it, what they didn't like, you know?
Yep.
Just to, or yeah, they could even come here and tell us, just so that we could kind of.
That's, that's part of the summer school program already at Phillips Exeter. They have to fill out a survey on their, on their experience, and also on their teacher involvement, and, and if they felt that they had any change in their own development. So that would be part of it that I'll be able to give to you after, after it. But again, I think hearing it from the students is much, much better than having to hear it from me.
Yeah.
And same for when you get to year two and beyond.
Correct.
You can bring back last year's graduates, if you will.
Right.
They can give their personal experience.
Yeah, I was hoping to be able to give you data, but they started this two years ago in Raymond, so this would be their current 11th graders. So I was hoping to get, you know, our kids, you know, making more challenges or looking at better schools or, or better opportunities because of this experience.
So this is like, this is an enrichment program?
Absolutely.
This, I mean, unfortunately, most kids think, oh, summer school is, you know, because I didn't pass something, but now we're actually offering something that.
Yeah. And again, they're going to give up their summer, and it's, it's not a great cost, but, but to further, you know, their opportunities. After the presentation, I, I took a, you know, just a quick poll. What'd you think? I think it's awesome, Mr. Andruski. Oh, this is pretty cool. You know, I, I didn't sound as smart as I could have in front of, I said, that's, that's meaningless, but that's what the kids are already thinking.
Yeah.
So it's pretty neat.
Krista Hocken Smith, that basically is round table.
Yeah.
Correct, there is no desk.
She has a round table.
Yep.
How are we going to be able to deal with that at us?
Sure, we, I mean, we'll, we'll set up classes where they have, you know, tables like this, you know, so that, that's what we'll do. And again, remember, it's, it's only going to be eight to 12 kids at the table, so I can make, I can make that work. We can do it in the library. We, we will make it work, you know, based on that method.
Yeah.
Our round tables might have a few little corners.
Right.
But the idea is there.
Well, the reason why the round table and a, and a single table, you can't hide.
Right.
You have to participate.
Yes. I think that's wonderful. Thank you.
Excellent, yeah. It's just a Phillips Exeter summer enrichment. That's what we're calling it. But the, the method, if you look it up, is heartness.
Heartness, yeah.
It's, it's a really neat, and if you can do research on them.
It's been going on for quite a few years.
Yeah.
So is this, I think it's great. It's a fantastic opportunity. And I think that the students that participate should have some sort of acknowledgement, like we're going when they're applying for colleges?
Right.
How would that be?
Yeah, we talked about that, because I said, are we going to get credit?
Yeah, yeah.
What's, what's in it for me?
A transcript?
Yeah, what we were going to do is we're going to put it on their transcript.
Okay.
Summer enrichment, and then also, that will be something, when they're filling up college applications, you know, what do you do extra? I, I went on a voluntary summer, or I was chosen for a summer enrichment program based on my, my academic needs. But Tom and I talked about, Mr. Pavelidis talked about putting on their transcripts, so it identified for those colleges that they did summer enrichment on their own.
Okay.
There won't be a grade associated with it, but, you know, we'll, we'll put a, a mark or something in there, so it identifies that.
They get some kind of, like.
Correct.
Certificate of completion or.
I'm not sure. And again, we can, we can, I can get that from, from Ethan, but that, again, I think that's another good, good acknowledgement for their time.
Yeah, great.
Get the kids excited, that's what I.
Yes, they very, they were.
Yeah.
Get them moving.
Very good.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's just a good example of, no matter what our building conditions are.
Exactly.
We still have great people that are just constantly trying to offer our kids the best opportunity.
Sure.
So I appreciate that.
You're welcome. All right, you guys get me for two more, so.
Just get comfortable up there.
That's right. All right. The, the next thing we're talking about, you know, block scheduling is obviously something that's very, you know, we've, we've been discussing. Last time you asked us to come back with a professional development plan that we would have from the remainder out. So Pat and I are going to discuss that with you. We started planning for professional development back on December 2nd. During that day, it was a full-day workshop. Staff had to do other, a couple other initiatives, but they were given the whole day to get in their departments and start talking about what unit plans would look like, and then daily lesson plans would look like in the, in the block. Fortunately, we have enough teachers on staff that have taught in a block that were able to lead a lot of that discussion. And Pat will talk about that a little bit more. That's, that's a lot of your best research is saying that your, your best professional development will come from in-house.
People that know.
Train the trainer. We're going to talk about bringing a specialist on to, to kind of give that, that, that little kick to it, but that's your best professional development. During that time, Dave Williams and I highlighted that how important it is to go to do site visits, and actually go to area schools. I've coordinated with Portsmouth, Samborn, and also Epping at any time to send people out to do site visits of those. I've had three staff members that have gone already on those site visits, and I actually have four that emailed me today to start that process as well. Because our goal is that every teacher will have gone on a site visit if they haven't done it already by April, so that they know. And part of that discussion is, you know, what's the biggest obstacles you have? You know, how did you transition from a 15-minute period? You know, do you have problems when you don't see kids every day? So they can come back and, as a department, talk about some of those things that they saw as positives and negatives, so that we can move forward. We have our next professional day next Wednesday on the 25th. During that time, we've been working.
Chris, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Sure.
I just, I'm just thinking, if someone's tuning in tonight and they're not familiar with what block scheduling is.
Sure.
We might not have captured it.
Okay.
And just to get.
Sure.
Us all on the same page.
Yeah, I'll go back to that.
Because it's been a couple months since.
Sure. Our block schedule, instead of going a seven, 50, 50-minute periods a day, we would go to four, four periods a day at 85 minutes. And then that would be every other day. So what we're able to do is offer eight classes to students rather than seven at 50 minutes. So these classes would be 85 minutes in duration. That's what a block would be. That's, that's the shift in how our schedule would go. So teachers, except for math, algebra, pre-algebra, our tech algebra, would see their students every other day. We also discussed AP classes of doing AP on one day and doing your AP lab the next day with kids, to do an enrichment process with them. Also, students that are in special education, still having their language lab, their math lab, and then also having study skills. So those are all things that would be embedded to our schedule. Does that sum it up enough?
I think so.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So with that said, we, on, on Wednesday, we have been writing the program of studies to reflect a block schedule. You know, what electives that we're offering, so that we can build a schedule, and I can bring that to you, what our schedule would actually look like with teacher input in, so you know what their daily schedule would be on an A-B schedule. And that, Pat's provided a template that looked at state standards, you know, what's the criteria? Is there a prerequisite? What are the essential questions that this class is going to meet, and, and why the students would cha, would take this class if it's not required? What the, the, the staff will do is they will start working and finishing their, their unit plans and lesson plans in a department on Wednesday. So they're really going to firm up their program of studies, they'll have those complete of all the electives, so that we can put that in a, in a guide for you to present to you, as well as continuing to work on their, their daily, daily lesson plans, and then larger unit lesson plans. And then our next, next day is March 16th, and I'll pass it over to Pat, so she can tell you what we have in store for that day.
On tiptoes, as it is. One of the things that, no matter what kind of schedule you use, time is the biggest element that affects everything we do in school, whether it's scheduling, curriculum, teacher, student, person, personal relationships. This is going to allow us a real focus of time to work with students. But the biggest change, and we all talked about that, was teaching. Do we have enough professional development? You all have been here when I've talked about all of the initiatives we've practiced, brain-based learning, key reading vocabulary, study skills, and content areas. Chris spoke to the fact that we have spent considerable time with teachers who have either taught in the block area, presently reside in towns where their own children go to block area schools. So the conversations have been rich, and we've developed some understanding of, you can't stand there for 85 minutes and talk. What else are we going to do? So we, we are going to allow ourselves the time to really look at collaboration. This will give us, especially at the high school level, some time to do some cross-departmental things. On March 16th, which is a whole day, we are going to have someone that already works in a block-scheduled school come in and talk to the staff about the pros, what, what's worked, what hasn't. We've already, I've discussed with two school districts, one of the biggest factors, they said, again, was time, but checking back with parents, students, and staff, a survey at least for the first two to three years going out, fine-tweaking everything we do, listening to all those voices say, you know, this works, this doesn't. Putting out for teachers, you know, we started about two years ago, instead of sending one or two teachers to a conference, I sent the entire math department, the entire science department. So they all heard the message at a conference or a workshop, and were able to come back and talk about it together. I mean, we've all played that game of telephone, the first person gets the message, but by the time it got back into the staff meeting, the whole message wasn't there. Yes, it cost us money for professional development, but it came from a federal grant, and I think it's a very good use of our money, because we were all hearing that message when we went to the conference together. So on March 16th, we will have a consultant come in, speak to staff, do some questions and answers, and then they're going to work in departments in small groups, looking at how a unit is constructed, you know, looking at what's a daily lesson plan involve? How do you break those time slots in? What do you do for that 85 minutes? You, you know, you can't stand there and talk for 85. So you're going to have to do activities, collaboration, hands-on, small group projects, big group presentations, warm-up activities, closure activities at the end of the lesson, a reflection, written, oral. Change it up. We spend a lot of time talking about brain-based learning. This is our chance to show what we've learned. On April 11th, which is an early release day, we will then ask staff to report on all their visitations and their concerns about block scheduling. You know, we went to this school, you went to that school, you have a child at another school, what do you see? What do you want to talk about? Keep talking about those concerns and what you think is really going to be the best part of this. We've asked every staff member to go if they can. We'll revisit what goes into a block schedule, what goes into the teaching part, what goes into the assessment part. You know, there, there is more to a block schedule when we first start out. It's a change, and we all know change involves engagement. But we have a chance to involve our students and our staff in active learning. We'll have group activities that will affect, you know, multiple intelligences, multiple learning styles. We will be able to use authentic assessment. We will be able to share resources and activities. Teachers will be able to share things with their colleagues, because they'll have that chance to plan and talk. My plan already is to use early release days next year, my curriculum meeting times, department times, for that collaboration. You know, that's how they learn from one another. So that's what we've looked at. And then May 11th, which is also an early release day, we expect staff to be able to bring a completed lesson plan and a unit, so that they can talk about it at the department and share what they think they've done. We are going to be looking at ongoing initiatives. The fact that we are going to be able to share with Phillips Exeter a professional development activity is huge. I, I think it's an incredible goal for us. What an opportunity. There, there is just no describing it, really. I think we'll look at, again, you know, what kind of goals do our teachers want to do for next year? I mean, we have to really look at those goals of, and how can we help them attain those goals of improving their instruction?[1469.53] goals of improving their instruction? I think as long as we are discussing, using collaborative time, and asking for feedback from everybody on an ongoing basis, I think we'll do a really good job. I think the staff that has already been involved in block scheduling is very excited about it. It allows us to, you know, in a daily schedule, you've got continual student movement out in the hall, you know, and fifty minutes, everybody's up and going, and probably five minutes before the fifty minutes is up, well, we have everything packed up because we have to get to the locker on the other side of the building and figure out my lock combination. Distractions from the halls are cut down. You have more focused times to finish labs, to finish projects, and I really think it's a huge step forward for us. I'm really excited about it. Okay.
Let the questions begin.
Let the questions begin.
Who wants to start?
Oh, dear.
I have some, I can go. Well, this is going to sound like a silly question, but I should probably already know this. How many staff are we talking about? This is at the high school level, so I'm just trying to get a concept of how many teachers were asking to leave and go do tours or whatever it is.
No, we asked all staff to look at it, middle school and high school.
Middle school and high school. So, how many is that approximately?
Full-time staff, over forty, you know, forty-eight, I believe, that we're asking at, you know, one period of day, I mean, one day to go out at different times.
So, they just ask you and then you free them up?
Yeah, and I've set it up with those other principals in the area to go out and say, hey, I have this teacher and this content, can you pair him up with someone for the day?
And then, someone covers their class?
Yeah, and we get a substitute to cover their class.
Okay. What is the staff buy-in, if you will? What is that like so far?
Sure, different departments, you know, again, change is a difficult thing, and going from fifty minutes to eighty-five minutes is a very, very difficult change. You have certain, some departments that are head over heels for this, science, physical education, languages, you know, they really are excited about this because instead of getting changed and dressed and having twenty minutes to do gym class, you actually can do a full activity, you know? Labs, you can start a lab and finish it and discuss it, you know, in an eighty-five minute block where you don't have to set up one day, wait for them to come in, do the lab, and then do a discussion, which is over three days. So, certain departments, it's very, you know, forthcoming. Other departments, though, they're talking about doing some collaboration. Now, you can take your social studies class, and you can take your English class, and you can do a debate, you know, in an eighty-five minute block, which is, so there's some really neat ideas to be able to go out there. And that's going to be Dave Williams, my responsibility, and Pat's responsibility on these professional development days, to go and meet with the departments and talk about how those things are going to look during the day. Because that's the biggest part, is transitioning the activities. You just don't want to say, all right, I just discussed for fifty minutes, now you got thirty-five minutes to do homework. That's not what block scheduling is about. It's to bring different activities and hit all those learning type of styles that happen in a classroom. So, again, seeing it firsthand through the observations, what we want our teachers to do, come back, talk about a department, have that discussion piece, build the units, we'll work with them, and then, again, it's going to be a process throughout all of next year, you know, does our schedule meet our needs? Do we need to manipulate it? The biggest thing is that this was a teacher input. This wasn't derived by myself or by David or by any administrator. Teachers came and said, we feel this is a need. Randy Edgarly, Carol Smart, me and the two major ones, Pam Caswell, we feel it's time. They led this charge, and that's who went out and started looking at it and bringing ideas, and that's when we formed the committee. So, that's when you know when teachers are leading the charge, that you've got support in your building.
Well, I think it's crucial, too, like you've already done, is to get the people that have already taught that way, to really sell the idea and to really explain to them the benefits that they're going to find. I mean, like you said, any change is difficult, but once you get over that initial, you know, learning curve, if you will, I think it can really benefit them and the students, which is ultimately...
The other thing that the middle school likes is now I'm going to say, give me your schedule, I'm not going to block things out for them. So, they'll know when their special time is each day, and then they're going to have those three hundred eighty-five minute periods to say, we're teaching this, this, and this today. So, they might teach science for an X amount of period or only meet with two groups. That's a thing that really works well in middle schools when you can block like that. The other added benefit from this schedule is that our high school teachers will now go from two hundred and fifty minutes of prep a week to four hundred and twenty-five minutes of prep. Research says that if you can have students, teachers having the ability to prep and really plan a class efficiently, you're going to see improvements in your class. So, that's an added benefit that you're going to see.
Another question I have, well, you know, this has been discussed, like you said, for a while, and so I went home, of course, and talked with my daughter, and her first thing to me was, what about study halls? So, can you kind of explain, because right now, with seven periods a day, you get a study hall, well, some of them do, I mean, some of them don't, but so how is that going to be?
In our current schedule, there is no study halls, you know, for the general student. There's still study lab, which will support the special ed student and the skills because they're deficient in that area. But, for the regular ed student, you know, grades nine and ten, there won't be. What you do is you make their schedule so it's not content-rich all in one day. So, they might have English and math and then take one of their electives where PE, where there's not any homework to support for that day, and then, you know, bring in another type of elective. That's how most schools will run it when they do not run study halls, so that they have a whole day now to do their work to prepare for that next class. There's a concern, and that's one thing that I talked about with many administrators, do you see it? It's fearful at the beginning, and then they go and do it, they say, you know what, I've got a whole night before I have to do that work. So, they have extra time where they're not doing as much homework for seven periods every day, they might be only working on two periods or two classes every other day.
Yeah, okay.
Which our plan would place in place, too. Our current schedule, you know, we have senior privileges, and we don't want to lose that. So, seniors would only be required to take seven out of the eight periods, so they'd have senior privileges one of the days. Unless they're an AP student and they're taking multiple APs, then they'd have a period off every day for that responsibility, you know, increasing the bar. And again, you can do the assenta for juniors, too. You want to take a higher load, a higher caseload, we'll give you a free period, you could have, you can have open campus on that period. And most schools either do it first period or last period of the day, so again, your transitions are cut down even further.
Okay.
So, when you're alternating classes like that, it strikes me that, and you're probably going to talk about math, but for some classes, or some topics, it seems that doing it every day impacts how quickly you pick it up. Maybe learning some math skills or foreign language isn't something, to me, that seems that would lend itself to, if I get it Monday, whatever, however it breaks out, if it's not kind of continuous, you know, immersion in a language is really the way to learn it. And if you're getting a little bit every other day, does that, do we lose something there?
There's no, there's no, attainable research says that you do. The one good thing, what I'm talking about, we're not, we're going to have math every single day for your pre-algebra, your tech algebra, and your algebra skills. Our goal is to have eighty-five minutes a day with those kids and those math skills, well, we're deficient right now, to continue to work on their skills. So, that's not going to even be a concern. And then, again, your AP classes, again, would be one every day, but it'd be content and maybe lab to reinforce those skills.
So, what you're saying is math will be one of those four periods every day?
Correct.
That's good.
We want to hit those skills every day on kids.
Yeah, yeah.
At that level, and then when they get into geometry, it'd be every other day, or pre-calc, where their skills are now needed, you know, not having to reinforce it every day is not as necessary.
The other thing I like about the concept, too, another thing I heard back from my daughter is about, we're going to have to sit in class for eighty-five minutes, you know, how, and it seems like a long period, and it is, it's adjustment, but it's very similar to what you're going to find in college. And I like how it gets you ready for that, and I remember eons ago, when I went to high school, that was one thing, even though I went to Newmarket, that I didn't quite feel was much of an emphasis, is really getting me, my senior, junior year, whatever, ready to expect what I was going to find in college. And some of my honors level classes did that, but I like this because, you know, it might, it's going to be an adjustment, and they're going to grumble at first, but I think that even that whole concept of, you know, teaching them and then having the hands, I mean, that's what you do in college, I mean, it's, you meet in small groups, and, you know, so I like that concept, it really, I think, is going to help them. They don't think so right now, but I think it will.
It reinforces also our goal of 21st century learning, where a lot of this collaborative work, group work, being able to bring in technology throughout the different eighty-five minutes of your lesson. So, that's another thing that really enforces our goal as a district, to be ready as a 21st century learner.
Yes, it's very important.
And to throw some of my expertise, my teaching experience, in terms of what you're talking about, Cliff, in terms of recall, recall, it depends on time, it depends on students' application, them sitting down and doing it, not sitting there watching somebody wave a piece of chalk around, it's going to be more effective when he has to sit there and rub elbows with the table.
Right.
The other question, Chris, I had was goals, I'm hoping that these goals are going to be written with this block scheduling, in terms of goals on content. Content will have to be covered.
Right.
You can't skip, you can't skip certain things in algebra and geometries because you want block scheduling.
Right.
Stuff has to be covered.
Yeah, and the good part is through the progress monitoring, we're really working on that, too, as a district, too, the power standards, they call it, your non-negotiables. These will all be embedded into what has to happen in all these classes. We have our state standards that we already have and our grade level expectations, but these power standards will be, these need to be done before a kid passes on, they need to know this, this, and this, and that's really the direction that we're heading, and this will allow us with that extra time.
And this is going to be written in goals, right?
Yep. We'll have a final presentation, once we meet, Dr. Hayes and I are meeting with the union on Monday to go over this exact thing, and once it's finalized, we'll do a whole presentation, I'll give you the whole schedule, we'll give the program of studies, you know, make teachers available so they can talk about their observations, what they've seen, so you can have further questions.
I did some block scheduling even in the sixties and the seventies, and to me, I think it's great because you have more time than, the time goes by fast. When you start work with individual students and individual students and work with other students, and, you know, it just, the whole thing seems to start gelling.
Well, the other, one other thing that I just got to keep bringing back, we're adding four extra opportunities for our kids during their high school experience that we don't currently have in our schedule now. And that's a major thing, that if we want to push our kids, we got to keep giving them opportunities. Because we have talented teachers that just teach seven periods a day with this, they're able to, oh, I might be able to teach this, I can fit this in. It's a really neat process, and I think that's what energizes your staff, when they can teach something that they haven't been able to teach because a schedule allows it.
The other thing I see was an advantage also is the interdisciplinary approach to it all.
Correct.
Where you can have somebody in advanced math, who, let's say, on, they can do their goals from the planning and say, okay, in another two weeks, we're studying this type of equations, let's get somebody in physics and show you how it's done with physics, and have the physics come down, and they can actually work it, and that reinforces, and reinforces the recall.
Correct.
So, I imagine this, what you just said, is by offering them four, is it different periods a day?
Four different periods.
Four different, we could have more electives?
Yes.
Yes.
Because a teacher goes, right now, a teacher teaches five out of seven a day. This would be six out of eight.
Yeah.
So, you're adding eighty-five minutes of instructional time from each of our...
So, where are you going to come up with those? Is that going to be teacher-driven, like contents that they want to teach?
That's part of it. We looked at, we looked at our necessary classes that we needed to meet, to meet our core graduation requirements, and then electives that we could bring in, you know, like the science department, bringing in environmental science or what else, oceanography. So, just different experiences, and then oceanography in the seacoast area, I mean, there's tons of resources right here, so those are different things. Marine biology was another elective that they thought about. So, again, broadening and opening up our scope of what we can offer.
Just to throw something out, it came to mind, have you ever thought of maybe the, let's say, the eighth grade and junior high work with some of the science in the ninth grade?
Oh, we've talked about it, again, it becomes that scheduling nightmare in our current schedule, in a block, you might be able to do it. We do it with math right now, where they go up and take an algebra one class.
It doesn't have to be every day, you know?
We've talked about it.
It could be like once a month.
What we do right now, so to answer your question in that, we, those kids that we feel in science that have tested out and have met the criteria as eighth graders, they skip physical science and go right to biology. So, that's how we manipulate it currently.
Good.
So, are there, the middle school environment with a block scheduling-type bell schedule, is that unusual or...
It's unusual because we share it in our building.
But, I mean, unusual as far as delivery of middle school program with those longer...
No, not at all, and Dave Williams, who is able to talk a lot about the middle school, he taught at Dover in a block schedule, again, this is the time you're going to your special, you tell us what you're going to do the rest of the day, so you meet the needs of your kids because you know them best. And again, different, it's really two different schools, your middle school, you have to do a little bit different type of instruction, it might not be eighty-five minutes, it might be seventy minutes in their different classes so they get to them. So, again, allowing that flexibility in our schedule because we have it in the school with what they need to do.
So, to come at it from the kind of perspective of, you know, harkening back to when I was a teenager going, well, everybody's going, you know, who isn't doing block scheduling?
I don't know of anybody right now, you know, in the seacoast area that is not doing it.
So, are we the only school?
When I did my research, yes.
Pretty much.
Out of high schools, and there's modifications. Block, this typical schedule, what, Oyster River has a different block, they have normal days, and then they have block scheduled days. Dover is a traditional four-by-four block, Sanborn does a variation, Epping has skinnies in there, Portsmouth has a variation, so all those schools are doing a block and have been doing a block for, Dover just did it this year, but the other schools have been doing it for some time. But, again, they look at their schedule, and how do we need to change it? And we might, I might be here next year saying, you know what, we found that this year we missed this piece, and it took a year to get it, but we need to build skinnies in to maybe get a study hall for kids, or do an enrichment class, or a catch-up class for kids, and this is how we can do it in our schedule, so.
My other concern is about the arts, like the band. Those kids usually meet every day, don't they, do they not?
Band?
Yeah.
Not at the middle school level.
What about the high school level?
The high school level, they do.
So, will that be one of these periods?
No, they would be in every other, every other day.
Because, you know, learning an instrument, again, is like something else.
In the high school, they've already, they've already learned it, it's just, it's mastery of what they're playing. At the middle school, it's a little bit, you know, they usually, most of the kids don't come in starting band at the high school level.
No, it's true, it's true.
But, they'll have more time to work on those skills.
On the day that they're with them, correct, yeah.
I'm recalling my, once again, my high school experience. Band is a lot like gym in some ways, where you have to go get your instrument, tune up, get, you know, everyone needs to get organized, knock over a few music stands along the way, and then by the time you're all good to go, you get through the piece once, and then you're packing up.
Right.
And then, running to gym to change and...
Right, yeah.
...give you the form.
Exactly.
So, it sounds like, and with, if you're serious about playing music, you're playing every day at home, so I can swallow that one.
Are we going to, I mean, maybe this has already happened and I missed it, is there any kind of, we're asking kids, students, question, to be able to ask questions about the process?
We haven't, again, we did it on research on other schools and what they were doing. When we started this as a committee, every single committee member went out to these area schools. Part of it was asking kids, asking teachers, asking department heads, asking administrators, and then we sent, you know, three people to a conference, and that was addressed the student perspective. We didn't ask our own students.
But, I meant asking our own students, like what their reservations are, what they...
Sure, I'd be glad to do that, you know?
Even asking, because some of them, I'm sure, know other kids from other towns and, you know, they might have heard, you know how it works, and so it'd be great to kind of alleviate some of their concerns before we move over to just an assembly.
Yeah, I can address that to advisory.
Yeah, and advisory, yeah.
Because advisory will still be in the schedule, and we feel that's a really important piece, so.
Yeah, I think, I mean, considering we're talking about changing their world significantly, it would be nice just to have them, because I'm sure, there's a lot of rumors that are going around out there that I'm sure you can, like you've done with me, just easily assuage their fears, and then they'll be a little bit...
But, I think it's good, and then it gives some feedback, so I'd be glad to bring that in.
Thank you.
I wonder if there's resources for parents that we need to get out there?
Yeah, once we get it done, you know, because there's going to be question, how do I support my child? We can definitely do a parent night and what that entails. And again, whoever we bring in for the specialist, we, another person, to be a nice resource of how they've done it and help out with parents, so we can definitely set that up as well.
I'm wondering if, though, there might be some good links out there already for things we could drop on our website, you know, what is block scheduling?
I've got a couple of things that I think that if I speak to the person whom I'm planning on coming in March, I think that person will be able to give us some good links and information for parents, but I agree, I think a sit-down session where parents could come in and say, oh, I heard this, or what does this mean, how will my child be affected? Especially if a child's already in high school, you know, they're a junior or a senior, how is this going to affect what I've already done? I do want to stress, one of the things that we've talked about tonight, when you look at the program, going to Phillips Exeter, the longer blocks of time, maybe not every class every day, we're reinforcing the students' own part of their education, we're making them ready to go to that transition to what happens after I leave high school, you know, whether it's a four-year school, whatever it is, it's how do you manage that time and that responsibility? And that's part of what our job is.
Because in college, sometimes you only have two classes a day, you know, and they're ninety minutes or they're whatever, and...
If you remember freshman year, you're all excited, because I only have to go to math one day this week.
I can sleep till whatever, yeah, I mean, it would be that way.
Oh, that paper's due Friday? Yeah.
It's very true, and it's going to help reinforce that for them, so they won't be so like fish out of water once they get there.
And if, through the process, I'd like the concepts that were shared about giving juniors some flexibility in their schedule, one of the things that we need, we have room to do a better job on is kind of, I call it, playing out the leash, you know, giving kids in a controlled way, more responsibility, more opportunities to be responsible for themselves, make mistakes in an environment that's safe, and it sounds like that's in alignment with that.
Keep the net up, still let them up.
I'm interested, I don't want to put you on the spot, but do you have any, Melissa, any questions, or, I mean, you're a current student right now, I mean, have you heard...
Think you want to stay another year?
You could get that luncheon twice.
Have you heard anything, or are there any...
I mean, my sister's a junior, so the biggest thing I heard from her was the same thing that you heard from Haley, which was, well, study halls and where are senior privileges going to play, and she's like, am I going to get my senior privileges? And I said, probably, so. I think it is going to be beneficial to every, I wanted to see block scheduling my senior year because that's what, I knew that it was in the works last year, so I was, I mean, that's what I wanted to see this year, but obviously, that's okay, but as long as it's coming in the works at some point. I mean, it is preparing you for the future, going to college, it's not like high school, so I think that high schools need to do that more, preparing you for the real world and not leashing you in as much, because in the real world, you're not on a leash, so that, yeah, it's my opinion, so, yes, I think it's wonderful.
I just have one, I think it's excellent that we're moving in this direction for many reasons, but I'm already thinking about next budget season, and I can hear the conversations already. So, what I ask you to do is, I know it's a short period of time, and we'll be foolish to think that we're going to have all of the books worked out and all the information collecting data, but we're really going to have to be mindful of justifying positions because that frequently comes up, and how this ties to our district mission, how it ties to our being a 21st century learner, and I don't know how much, like, concrete data we'll have between now and when we're developing our budget, which seems like it'll be tomorrow for next year, but I think that's going to be essential so we can justify, not only justify, but really articulate that these positions are needed and this is the reason why.
Sure, I think that's great.
Any last things?
All set.
Thanks so much for...
Thanks for all the hard work.
Oh, you're welcome, thank you. All right. You want to butt in, or you want me to just finish up?
I'll go ahead.
He's on a roll.
He's on a roll.
I don't get to talk this much in my house, it's not... You asked us to prepare just some data about fire drills and evacuation, so I did a three-year study over the last three years on how many fire drills we had and just time out of the building. In two thousand nine, two thousand ten, we conducted ten fire drills. Last year, we conducted seven, which we scheduled with the fire department, so these were all scheduled times that we knew that we were going to have them, and currently, we have And currently we have three, and again, we have four more planned, uh, for the second semester. Our average time out of the building, um, our quickest time out of the building was a minute and thirty seconds. And when I confirmed with Roger and Seth, the two current, um, fire, uh, uh, full-time firefighters or fire rescue from Newmarket. That's really the, the time period you're trying to shoot for in, in a middle high school is, is ninety seconds. Uh, so our fastest time is ninety seconds and, you know, our, our standard time's a little over two and a half minutes out of the building. So, we're, we're constantly getting closer and closer. Um, the first year, we, we were tabulating the time we left the building to the time we came back in. So if we were up forty minutes, I'm like, that's not the calculation you look. So I, I can't even share that data, cause it's not valid. You know, forty minutes, it didn't take us forty minutes to get out. But it was a forty minute, you know, so I, I bring it back to you. But our average is right around two and a half minutes every, every evacuation. And again, uh, winter plays, plays, uh, plays a role into that. And then also, uh, your athletes play a role into that when they're, when they're hurt. You got kids up on the second floor coming down on crutches, it, it does, cause we count when that last body.
It's the very last person, huh?
Yeah, that's how we, that's how we.
Those athletes.
Um, so that's, that's what we looked at. But our, our goal is to have seven a year. Uh, we've met that goal. Um, and again, I just did three, the last three years. And again, uh, two thousand nine, two thousand ten, we had ten. Um, and, but the last couple of years, I've actually met with the fire department. In the summertime, we've gone through a schedule, uh, to go and when we're gonna do fire drills. And then we put our other drills, um, you know, around those fire drills, such as our lockdowns, our shelter in place.
I was gonna ask you about that too. So there, how many drills are like?
We, last year, we did two, two, um, two lockdowns. Um, and this year, we've done a lockdown and a shelter in place. Uh, those lockdowns, we, we invite, uh, the entire police department up and they go through and they, they check our building out for accessibility in and out. Uh, they'll go through, let me in, let me in. Um, and each year, our kids get better and better and better about being quiet and getting in and hidden. Um, you know, the last time we did it, um, Officer True, um, Officer Laurent came up and said, if, if this was fabulous, if I'm, if I'm an intruder, you know, I don't know where I'm gonna go. Cause you can't hear anything. So those are really positives back to, back to our kids and our staff are training appropriately.
So, um, this is gonna seem silly, but I'm not there during the day. What is the difference between a lockdown and a shelter in place?
Sure, lockdown, you're completely, you're, you're hiding, cause there's an internal intruder in the building. Shelter in place, there might be, we might have an unruly student that we don't want students to see as we're escorting them out, either if it's a police person or, or if it's a, maybe a student that needs to be restrained because they have, you know, um, some, um, emotional or behavioral problems. Uh, it could be a parent that is, you know, screaming and that we need to remove. Uh, it could be an accident outside of the building that we don't want them to go. So kids stay in their classrooms. It's business is normal, but they're not to leave their classroom for any reason. That's the difference of shelter in place.
And you notify them through the intercons system?
What we do, when we call a, a drill, I'll say, you know, excuse me, this is Mr. Andruski, we're, it's now a fire drill. Um, or the, the, the fire department will come in and pull, pull the alarm. Um, but for shelter in place and lockdown, we always call it a drill when it is a drill. We identify that so that we know.
Know the difference.
And if I, and if I say, we, we are actively in a, and then that's when they know the difference. So I'll say drill if it is a drill.
Great.
The, um, you know, the discussions of fire and life safety have, um, kind of inspired me to, to ask the question. So thanks for, for coming to speak to the, the topic. I'm specifically thinking about those upstairs science classrooms that, um, we've got proposals for, you know, some of the big money to spend on improving the egress from, from those spaces. The, I guess my question is, you, okay, if we, we've got seven class periods during the day. Are we making sure that we're ma, we get a different group of kids evacuating from that, um, physical science classroom?
Right. What we do, when we do our, our, our drills, it's, it's all different periods of the day. We, we try to stay away from certain targets. We try to, sometimes we've been trying now to catch when SST kids are coming back at nine thirty, how that affects with, with a transition coming into the building. Uh, the fire department likes to play tricks and they'll pull a kid, make sure our staff has, has noticed, are they missing? They'll put blocked off areas so that we, you know, it can't be your first e, uh, degra, uh, egress out of the building, so the kids have to maneuver around. So they will do those types of scenarios during the fire drills that, that our, our staff and students have to navigate around.
So kids basically need to know how to leave that building from any classroom that they're in.
In two ways.
Yes, yeah. And again, that's every, that's part of what the expectations, we, we go over with our staff and they, they go over that first day and they hammer it for the entire first week. Here's the fire drill, here's the evacuation, this is where we go. Uh, and with our new plan, where we, we evacuate out to the rec center. It makes it so much easier than being near the building, cause every kid knows where they're supposed to go. Middle school's in one area, high school's in another area, specialist, you know, are, um, in a certain area if you're in that period. Um, so it's, it's very systematic and it goes a much, much more smoothly when you're looking for missing students or staff.
So the main place they all evacuate to is out through the field into the recreation?
Right, in the recreation parking lot. And then we go out around, uh, where parking is, out by the skate park. So we line up in those areas and it's, it's easy. You go out there and it's a sea of green, hopefully, with the meaning that we're, we're all good. And then we can identify with those red cards that somebody is missing. You have an extra student or you're missing a student. Our runner or our, our area coordinator will go and find out who that is, call it into our, our secretaries who are like home base. And then they, they'll coordinate where the kid is. Yep, I, I just had another teacher calling, they're missing, you know, Kelly Foster. She's with, you know, Mr. Andruski, we're all set. You know, we know that that red card can go down. And then my job is to stay in the building with the fire department or at the main facility to, um, you know, direct where the problem is and then, and coordinate that way. So it's, it's running much more smoothly when Officer Stevens helped deliver that plan two years ago.
So the time that they, this one minute and thirty seconds, the great, the quickest time?
Yeah.
Is that till when they get to the rec center?
No, that's out of the building. Last, last kid out of the building, um, when the initial bell goes off, or we call it, from that, that starting point to when they're out of the building.
So you have like a top stopwatch or something?
Yeah, we'll hit it right there. And then Elizabeth Valensky will, will be in charge of writing the report and then getting it to me for sign off and, and be part of that time.
Nice.
So we're, we're hovering between a minute and a half and two and a half minutes.
Right.
Is there any common denominators or, you know, for the days that are two and a half minutes?
Not, not that we could really see, you know. And again, you know, when I look at some of our, our, our times, last year, we had a minute and thirty and it was December sixteenth, you know.
In the winter.
Yeah, there was no rationale. Um, again, but in October, we had ninety-four seconds, you know, just over a minute and thirty-four seconds, you know. So that was in, in October. So there's no rhyme or reason. And then you have, um, you know, beginning of the year, you know, we, we know it's the first time we're doing it, it was, you know, just over three minutes. So we know at the beginning of the year, it's gonna be a little slower. They forget how to do it and hopefully it'll progress, but, you know, we're right around that two minutes towards the end of the year. And, and the, and the fire, uh, fire staff felt, yeah, that's, that's good. Can you keep shooting for, for ninety seconds?
Okay.
Great.
Any other questions? Thanks very much.
You're welcome.
Good evening. We have a similar method in place at the high, at the elementary school with the card system. Um, the frame of reference when we do an evacuation drill is the classroom teacher. That becomes important because if students are at music, art, or one of the other specials, then the, the, um, protocol is that they exit with that teacher and then rejoin their classroom teacher outside the building. So, uh, we also have a card system. We use both ends of the building. We have a whole collection of about twenty runners who meet outside the main entrance. And then they go and resolve any issues that come up. The administrators during a drill will go through each wing, check the classrooms, meet in the middle. And so we really have lots of checks and balances in place. What you have before you is this year's fire drills. I can give you other years, but, um, I focused on this year. You'll see that we only had one lockdown. And what we did is, um, we had this, well, we had Officer Stevens come over and talk to our staff. Uh, he also came another day and talked to the, um, that teaching staff at a faculty meeting, but also to the paraprofessionals. And these are some of the situations we had to deal with. If a class is going from their main classroom to music or art, they're usually accompanied by the paraprofessionals, if there are some. Who walk them through. So one of the situations we had to, to grapple with is that those teachers, uh, those staff members didn't actually have keys to all the rooms. And we had rooms that were keyed differently. So, and we also have substitutes. And we talked to the high school and say, how do you handle substitutes? So what we did, um, this fall is we worked to rekey all of the classrooms. So that, um, every staff member has a key, they can, they're normally locked now. That was a change in protocol. So if a teacher is out of the classroom, when we have a, a drill, a lockdown, the door is already locked. When they're in there, they can leave it open. Because the first graders, for example, really can't open those big doors. They're really heavy. So if they have to leave to go get milk, they can't get back in. So we had all of those things that we considered. And, um, as you see, we've had six fire drills. We start right away. One thing that's different at the elementary school than at the high school is that the children, and they're as young as three, don't come knowing how to do a fire drill. So we do lots of, you know, teaching and preparation. The day of the first drill, I announce in the morning, today we're going to have a fire drill. So we don't tell them when, but then the teachers prepare them, um, and then we all exit. One of the things, uh, that was also affected this year is that we have a new room at the end of the preschool, end of the building, as you come in on the, uh, from Drell Drive. And what that did is it actually took away one of the additional exits. So we had to reroute. We still have two forms of egress from every classroom. The fire department is happy with what we've done in order to, uh, reroute. But we did run into a traffic jam at the front entrance. If you want to look down through, um, some of the things that have come up. We debrief after every fire drill, uh, uh, safety team. And we talk about things that we need to do better. In the drill, when, the second drill, when the fire department came in, they actually also pulled a student in our building. And, um, there was a glitch because the classroom teacher knew that this student was working with a specialist. And so they made an assumption, but what they should've done is they should've made sure that student was back with them. So we clarified that. That's why you do a drill, cause you discover those things. So it's all gone pretty well. We've had as a target, two minutes. And the only one that even, uh, was at two minutes was when the fire department was in on the first time. But generally, we're around a minute and a half or a minute forty seconds. So our students do really well. They have this down by now. The other thing we do is we do cold weather drills. I choose a day that's cold, but not so cold as to be painful. We practice with the students. And we had to figure out, they can't go get their own jackets, but we asked them all to grab a jacket in the room they're in. And then they sort them out when they get outside. Cause we have to be prepared for that. And that's a big deal at an elementary school. So, uh, we've done cold weather, weather drills. I haven't done one now. December was in the fifties or sixties.
Wait a little bit.
You're waiting for cold weather, you know, but not too cold. Yeah, we'll see, yeah. It has to be warm enough that nobody gets injured, but cold enough that they're motivated to take a jacket.
So what is the message that they get? They can't grab any of their belongings? They're just supposed to leave?
Oh, no, you, you'd never grab belongings in an emergency drill. But if it's cold weather, then we want the teachers to have talked with the students about, we want you to take your jackets. Cause if you're, if there's really an emergency and you're out there twenty minutes and walking to the high school or the rec center. We want them to be, you know, protected. But, um, so if it's cold enough, we want them to have the response, grab the jacket. If you're in the classroom. If they're in art room, they won't have a jacket. So then we have thermal blankets, those kinds of things to help, so. So we practice a lot.
So I imagine that's the same with the high school? No, no coats? They don't get their coat? They just?
I'm lucky if they wear coats.
Yeah, yeah. I saw someone, some kid walking home today with a T-shirt on. I, I couldn't believe it.
Kids in shorts.
They're tougher when they get to be teenagers.
All those cold weather drills you have them do, that makes sense.
We don't do a lot, but we try to do one every year on a day, as I said, that's, you know, like fifty-five and sunny, but it's still winter, so they get the message. This is, you have to think about this. If you're in the room, just grab a jacket and we'll sort it out.
So you, you do the lockdown? Do you do shelter in place? Is there any?
I'm sorry, what?
Shelter in place? Is there any reason for elementary school?
Um, yes, we would use that as well, but we really focused on re, right now, so far this year, we really focused on redoing the procedures for the lockdown.
Sure.
And, um, the other issue, and I think it's true at, uh, the high school, I know it is, that there are doors connecting rooms. So we had to really sort out how we're gonna make sure that all the rooms are locked when we need to. So, um, we had actually scheduled the police department to come in, once we had kind of reestablished how we would do those. They were going to come in, uh, I had to move that. I can't remember the reason at this point. But, um, we, we're gonna have them come in and again, monitor our lockdown drill and make sure that we're doing it well.
Okay, thanks very much.
It's important information. Thanks for asking for it.
It'll lay some concerns, which is good. Okay.
I wish we were further through.
Onto, um, moving right along to the budget revision.
I wasn't sure exactly how to approach this with you tonight. I, I've certainly collaborated with our, no, you don't have to, if you don't want to. I've collaborated with, with our administrators to try and, uh, you know, take a look at what was suggested by the, uh, budget committee. And then take a look at if, if there's something different, what might we recommend differently? And, um, so what you see here is a, is a composite. Um, and, and I recognize that, you know, although to me, you know, I think this is a good recommendation, that you may have other ideas that you wanna talk about, but I thought it might be a, a starting point. So let me just describe them, um, briefly here, very briefly. The budget committees, uh, you've got them all listed on the left. They, uh, recommended eliminating the full amount for administrator raises. Um, and you see that the figure that I show on the left is, is ten thousand dollars different from that. I really took a, a look at my game plan for it. Administrator raises, if you will. And as I've said before, part of that is equity and part of that is, is, um, is performance. And I, and I truly believe that, you know, we, we have pay scales that are not competitive with, within our operation. Certainly with other school districts. Frankly, some, the, the, the pay scales that are, um, in the school district and the town, similar positions, great disparity in what's being paid. And so, so there are issues there that I, I'm trying to address and, and with administrators, as, as well as we had done with classified. And so, so my recommendation is, is that at least if you'd provide me ten thousand dollars out of that fund of money, then I can address some of the more egregious, uh, equity issues. The budget committee recommended eliminating the, the, the new pay schedule for coaches. And certainly I've, I've included that as well. We can go another year. Um, they recommended eliminating contingency. Um, I wouldn't recommend that. I mean, given our conversation about ceilings, should be pretty obvious. I wouldn't recommend it. Driver's ed, um, yeah, absolutely. I think that's a, that's a no brainer. They, uh, uh, recommended eliminating the data manager position. There is no way we can survive without that position. So that's got to stay. Um, that, there's twenty percent health insurance for non-union personnel. I, I realize, uh, you know, it's meant to send a message more than that, more than just that twenty-eight thousand dollar savings. It's meant really to send a message to other employees. And, um, uh, frankly, I, I think we did a heck of a job sending that message. And, uh, and so I, I, I don't know that this is gonna do anything more than, um, make, it's, it's not gonna change anymore of the message we've sent. And I think it's going to just be, um, perceived very unfairly by the, the few people that it affects. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't propose that in my recommendations and technology, new equipment. I didn't include that, although I, I, you know, as we go through this, if you see things differently than what I have, then, then, yeah, I suppose we can take money out of the, um, capital reserve for technology. But, um, but again, it's meant for the more, um, unanticipated issues, um, generally. Painting and carpeting at high school, uh, the full amount recommended by the budget committee to be cut was eighteen thousand. In, in my calculations, I use that as kind of like the, uh, the last card to be played. And so, so I need to get to the same number that the budget committee had, which is a hundred ninety-two thousand, one hundred ninety-two dollars in cuts. And so that's why you see that odd number there. And it, it, so it takes out, uh, seven thousand two hundred twenty-one dollars of their request and leaves money in there to still do some work. And as I think I've said to you before, I think it's really important that we, um, we try to, you know, make it a, um, a, a more comfortable and, and productive work environment. It adds to that, but it also adds to our argument that, um, that we're going to have to make someday, that, uh, we've made good faith efforts to try and keep that a, um, a, a good facility. And then we get to, uh, four others, which weren't on the budget committee's list, but, but came out of our discussions as administrators. Um, I think actually the first one was discussed but not supported by the budget committee. And that is to reduce a second grade teacher. To collapse the number of sections. And, and I believe that increased the class size in second grade, average class size from sixteen students to twenty students. Which we felt, um, was, uh, was, uh, is something we certainly can make work. It's not out of the range of possibilities to have that many kids. And, and I think, uh, what it does is it frees up a classroom for us, because we, we may, we've talked about it very recently. May have some need for another classroom in, uh, preschool, am I right? Yeah, because of just numbers that are growing there. And that's a special ed population you have to address, so. So we, um, so we see that as a, as a pretty smart move at this point and are not worried about the year after. And, and, uh, feel we'll, we'll deal with that when it comes. And you, you just don't know what the numbers will be a year after. The, uh, next one is, is elimination of the school to career coordinator position. As you know, we went there a year ago. And, uh, um, you know, felt we could do without it then, but, you know, yielded to, to other people's ideas to say, let's keep it at halftime. But for us, in the scheme of things, if we're, if we're really cutting back, um, this is a position that we feel we can, uh, eliminate and still address in other ways. Then there are, uh, two paraprofessional positions at the elementary school. And we think that by reassigning people, we can, we can shrink that population by two and still make sure we serve student needs. And then lastly, the, uh, drama and Lego stipends. Uh, I, I don't know if Scott's already had the conversation, but he's going to have the conversation with the PTA about absorbing those stipends for another year. And so all of that adds up to one hundred ninety-two thousand, one hundred ninety-two dollars. So in the end, again, we started out with a budget that was a one point one five percent increase. And this will result in a budget that is a point one eight percent decrease. was a 1.15% increase, and this will result in a budget that is a 0.18% decrease over where we are today. So it's certainly up for discussion. You have other ideas.
Who wants to start? We were nauseated before talking about this in the high school.
I mean, I can start, I guess. After the budget committee meeting the other night, I went through and, you know, wrote down all of the things that they requested. And then I thought, I went over each one of them and decided in my mind which ones I thought we could deal with and which ones wouldn't directly impact the program. And so I came up with $96,000 worth of those recommended cuts that I could agree with. But there's definitely $95,000 that I didn't. So I get what you're trying to do, and I appreciate more than you probably know what you're trying to do with our pay scales and how that's going to impact our teachers, because we all know that they're, the teachers and the administrators and the classifieds are all underpaid, no matter what people think, compared to other area school districts. But I think we would be remiss as a board if we didn't hear what the people of our town are saying to us in terms of giving pay raises at all. So I would not be in favor of supporting the $30,000 for administrative raises, not that either of you two don't deserve it, because I wish I could give it to you, but I just, I can't do that. The budget committee hasn't given pay raises in the last two years, and I really think that we need to keep in mind the greater scope of what we are going to try and ask our town to do for us in the school project. And I just don't think that that's in keeping with that mentality.
If I can, I don't want to interrupt, but just to be clear, I didn't ask for restoration of that whole amount.
I know, I know. I get that.
Yeah, because there's an impression there that I did.
No, no, no. You only wanted basically, what, $10,000 of it?
$10,000 out of that.
I get that. And I know, in a scope of a $14 million budget, $10,000 really doesn't do much. It's more the message.
I understand. No, I do get it, but I felt I wouldn't be doing my responsibility if I just let that pass.
No, I know. The driver's ed, that's kind of a wash. That had to come out. So that was part of it. The building and repairs, I know how necessary it is, and we do need to prove that. I was going to recommend that we take it from the trust fund, but now that you just told us that other stuff, that kind of changes everything. So that might not be available. So maybe I could deal with only half of that. And then the coaches stipends, I was going to. The other ones, the contingency fund, I don't think we can get rid of. The technology equipment, we can't get rid of. The data manager position is too crucial, I believe. And then the other one that I did kind of say that I could deal with was the 20% healthcare to the non-union staff, only because of the message that it sends, that we all need, they all need to move to that place. And I do think that I heard the budget committee the other night say that that might help us. If we do that now, then we can, it'll be another bargaining chip that we'll have to use with teachers next year to say, this is what we did. Now you need to, it's even more imperative that you do the same thing. So that's what I had come up with, the things that I could deal with. I'm really kind of, when I initially looked at this, I see the second grade teacher, I mean, people that we're going to have to lay off, and it just turns my stomach. And I guess I'm just a little kind of confused, and I'm sure it has to just do with the way enrollment plays out. But I remember, was it like a year ago or two, that the elementary school teacher was coming, asking us for an additional elementary school teacher that we put into the budget, whether it was second grade or first grade or something. And now I just feel like we're kind of going back and forth, and it's like we add them to the budget, we take them out. And these are like people's lives that we're dealing with. And I just, it, obviously, I guess the enrollment numbers didn't work out the way that maybe we thought they were going to when we initially hired that person. Is that kind of what happened?
The person was put in third grade. The person went to third, we added the third grade last year.
That's where we needed the body, was in the third grade?
It's huge.
Okay. All right. Because I, I don't know. I do agree that 16 to 20 is probably not going to do a disservice to those students, although the smaller the class, the younger the age, I do realize is really important. And I'm just not really willing to let go of the school to career coordinator. You know, it really hurt me to see her even have to go down to part-time, not even her, but that position and what it brings to our school and the program. You know, people can call me crazy, but I just really feel that it outweighs, you know, it just provides us so much, and the students get so much. And I don't know. My arm would really have to be twisted to support that.
If this were an easy cut, it would have been part of the original budget proposal.
No, I get that. None of this is easy.
No, it isn't. You know, I remember saying this a year ago, if not this, then what?
I know.
Get into those kinds of things. And so it's the lesser of two painful situations.
If I was going to propose something, I would go back to the special ed building coordinators. Jean's not here, but I think she told us back then that, you know, do we necessarily need one for each building? Why do we need one? Why can't we just have one for the entire school district? You know, I don't know what that salary equates to, but, or could we have a part-time special ed building coordinator?
My computer didn't die yet.
I mean, I just...
We had that conversation. And obviously, we didn't just talk about these things, but we had that conversation. And my question was, all right, if we eliminate one, then what happens?
Right.
And what happens is that, in effect, Jean would become the building coordinator. In fact, we even talked about she may have to move her office there. And that's the problem, because she does a lot of other things, a lot of things that, you know, help kids and that, you know, protects us as well from, you know...
Lawsuits.
Lawsuits, financial things.
No, I know that. I get...
I'm just telling you how we would play it out. So we did talk about it, but...
So there is a requirement to have somebody in those buildings full-time?
The requirement is more so at...
It's the meetings, isn't it?
At the meetings. And you need somebody with that expertise and the vested authority, if you will, to commit the resources of the school district. And so you put it in administrators' hands, and typically, you want one person doing it all the time as opposed to different people. And so you try and keep the principal out of the picture, because principals can't always make all the meetings. So that's how it ends up being an administrative position for each of those schools.
But if it's only for meetings, then why does her office need to be moved to that building? I just don't...
There are lots of...
Well, I know there's lots of meetings, I guess. Would she just be in meetings all day, is what you're saying?
But it's not just the meetings, but it's meetings and it's coordination of meetings.
IPs.
It's contact back to parents on a variety of things. So it's, she really facilitates so that the teachers can teach. Takes a lot of burdens. I'm just, you know, I get your point. I'm not at all surprised to hear it come out. And again, obviously, I talked about it in our administrative meetings.
There is a little confusion in that area, and it just blows up. It does. You have to keep a handle on it.
And that's a cut that, you know, we'll do our best to make it work. I'm not saying, oh, God.
I don't know. I'm just one voice, but that's...
I know you are, but I'm just saying, that's a cut that came up and...
Sure. Well, that would be...
We'll do our best to make it work.
Yeah, I...
How much? Yeah, the total, how much was it?
$99.656 with benefits and the retirement and the bike and everything.
$656, you said?
Yep, $99.656.
Is there, could it be a part-time building coordinator, special ed building coordinator? I mean, even, I mean, look at how, the difference between that salary and the school to career coordinator half? Or would it be equal? Probably equal.
Conceivable. Say that, but...
I mean, I don't know.
You know, the market for special ed people with administrative kind of expertise is pretty good, and so, so somebody stay for halftime.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, I don't know. I'm just trying to reinvent the wheel here. We're trying to think outside the box.
Don't worry, I'm not trying to...
No, I know.
Stifle you. But, yeah, we could certainly try. We could certainly try. You know, I've been through, you know, a lot of budget-cutting years, and sometimes with that effort, I can remember we had, in our previous district, we said, from here on out, we're not hiring any full-time pairs. We're going to hire half-time pairs. And it sounds good, and we really tried to make it work, but we couldn't attract people to the position. So we were forced to go back to full-time. So, I mean, the same thing could happen.
Yeah, it could be.
If you're willing, if you want to make it a try, then we make it a try.
I don't know. That's just would be my suggestion, but I need to hear what everyone else thinks, too. So that's my shtick.
Do people know we're talking about this, like, specific people, since we're talking early?
I had no time to notify people.
And this needs, just for our own time, like, because the budget committee is...
The 26th.
The 26th. So this is, we need to get it done tonight?
It's a shame we don't have a calendar here.
We'll schedule another meeting.
I have a feeling we may end up having another meeting, because the budget committee is still meeting after our, this is our last January meeting. I'm concerned we may have to before the end of the month.
Okay.
After they meet.
Yeah, maybe, to finalize or warrant that.
Is there any way, like, I'm just going, I, I think our human resources are most valuable in a school system. No matter what the job is, it has either that direct link teacher-to-student or the custodian who is making our building look beautiful, or the food service personnel. So at all costs, I want to keep our human resources, because they have an impact on our student performance in one way or the other, and they help support our mission statement. So I'm looking like scrambling through the budget, trying to remember what I originally wanted to cut way back when. Can we go deeper with scholar supplies? Or is that going too crazy, where kids won't get the curriculum materials that they need? Just a thought. And then I would be in favor, and then I'll go through, I guess I'll go through each one of them, of using some of our trust fund monies to offset some of these expenses. I know technology is a dire need for us, and dipping into the technology trust fund may put us at a disadvantage next year. It's kind of a roll of the dice, but I think it would be the responsible thing to do, is if we are committed to the technology new equipment for $25,000, I'd like to see that come out of the technology trust fund. Administrators raises. I was prepared to say no raises, but I think what, I heard you say it wasn't raises, and I'm not trying to do wordsmithing here or mislead anybody, but you're focusing on equity of pay scale rather than bonuses.
Right.
He said performance at one point.
When I put this all together, I mean, I have a spreadsheet with everybody that shows salary information and so forth. And I had two columns, one that characterized their raise that I might have given at that time, and then also a separate column for equity that said, I realize they're way behind, and here's how much I would give in that year to move it forward.
So this $20,000 reflects equity?
No, the $20,000 is the cut.
The $10,000.
Oh, I'm sorry, the $10,000, sorry. $10,000 would be equity in pay scale. Okay.
And in my mind, that's in alignment with what the budget committee supported, where they didn't take out those equity corrections, et cetera, that were discussed with non-certified staff. So with that in mind, I'm fully in support of keeping Jim's recommended change there, leaving him $10,000 to help correct the...
The equity issues, but not giving pay raises, because I think there was that clear message, and we need to take that seriously. We have huge financial decisions we're going to be making in the next couple of years, and I want the community to know that we're acting in good faith and being responsible. Anyhow, I would agree with that, too. Stipend coaches, our new stipend, I feel horrible for those coaches, because now it's going to be 17 years. So next year, it cannot be, I don't want to see it as an option cut. It just, come on now. They, driver's ed, that's fine. Painting and carpeting, I don't know if that could be taken out of the school repair and maintenance trust fund. I will not support the second grade teacher. We worked hard to get that position in the budget. And if you go on the Department of Ed website, which anybody can do, our school numbers, our numbers for elementary schools are well within everybody else in this state. It's not like we have a school population or a classroom population of eight kids. So I'm fine with 16 kids at the second grade level. And I think they are still learning how to be students. Learning how to read, learning how to write, learning how to do math. Smaller group instruction is where it's at. The paraprofessionals. So are these special ed paraprofessionals? Or, because, are these paraprofessionals providing RTI services, or are they...
Well, as we described before, they have a certain level of special ed assignment, and then they have other assignments. Some of it is RTI.
And how would that be addressed?
By reassigning the, their students, by reassigning the remaining paraprofessionals to better utilize them for the special ed.
So the other pairs would basically have more work to do?
Well, ultimately, their time is spent differently.
Or...
More students to care for. Is that what you're saying?
Or the RTI, who is going to do the RTI support, then? Or is that, those kids still get their needs met?
Yes, they will. And I just really, I really believe that a reorganization of the RTI is in order. And we can do it with less staff if we've done it properly. I don't think it's an all-hands-on-deck approach that makes it successful.
Were there any positions at the middle junior high discussed? Like, I feel like there's a lot from the elementary school.
And there is, but in, you know, in the previous round, remember, we cut quite a few...
From there.
Last year, as it really came out of the junior school.
Right, you're right. You're right. Thank you. I'm still going over in my mind, school to career coordinator and the paraprofessionals. So I'd like to hear from other coordinators.
Well, the only thing, the only thing I'm concerned about is the fact is the stipends for the coaches. I think that there's a lot of work put into that, and it's been a long time. I think that should go ahead, and I think, no question in my mind. It's not like it's $50,000. It's not a large sum. I think that that's something we should keep. And the other thing is the Lego stipends of $2,000. I think a lot of students who want to do things with their hands and their minds and their eyes and look creatively about making things with, you know, I think that's important at that elementary level.
I agree with you, but I think that can continue with PTA support, and I know Scott feels the same way.
All right.
So are we going to be...
Another year. It may show itself again next year, because that was their plan.
Can we be assured of that somehow before we, I mean, because that's, I mean, that's really important. I wouldn't support that either. I don't know if anyone else saw this, but somebody sent me a link. Did you see the link?
Yes, I could see it.
Of the, there's, I don't even remember. Do you remember what school, college it was at or something? But there's some, like, Brainiac College guy that has taken and made DNA out of Legos.
Oh.
And they're showing, and it's just amazing. And so that's what we have to see, this program helping support that kind of thinking.
Yeah. No, I totally get it. There's no intention to lose that.
Okay.
And I can, Scott, Scott was the one who brought that forward and said he would have a conversation with the PTA. I just don't know if he has finalized that.
I know that we saw that NCEP thing. Is it NCEP? Is that what?
Mm-hmm.
They have, were putting out their grants for people to apply for, and I think I recommended that the Lego club do that, too. So I don't know. That's another option that they could look into. I think it's, their requirement is like $700, the total amount or something. I can't remember.
Yeah, and that, I mean, I can't speak to what...
They would approve.
...qualify for.
No, 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 I know.
But I think, it seems to me that, that $2,000, I mean, it's a small number, so it's not making a large impact on a multimillion-dollar budget, but it's, yet it's small enough that the money can be... some, it's, yet it's small enough that the money can be found in the community elsewhere to, to support it, and I don't think we're sending a message necessarily that we think Legos aren't a good visual or learning tool. You know, I, I see the, you know, the, the enrichment piece, and, as well as the engagement of some of our younger learners with both of those programs, and I, I'd hate to see them go away. But if, if we can find community money to support them, they, they seem to be, it's small enough that the community can kind of their head around accomplishing the whole thing, rather than just.
And when I think of this so-called creative thing with hands and eyes, I think in only one year, two years, it builds, it has to build. Even when you get into SST with pre-engineering, that's how you get these students into the engineering. We lack this in this country, bad. That's, that's very, very important.
We're not recommending it goes away, again.
All right. As long as you got it figured out, that's, that's okay with me.
The, as for the stipends for, for coaches, realizing that, you know, a lot of the trouble, as, as I'm recalling the conversation, is there's significant inequity among what our teach, our coaches are being currently paid, proportional to, largely to the number of hours of student contact. The, but, it's, you know, and there's, so there's that fundamental inequity there, but I'm not, I'm not sure that is really going to impact the quality or who we get as coaches immediately.
No, I don't think either.
You know, because people, people are, I'd like, I'd like to reward people proportionally and, and fairly for what they are doing, but they're not there.
For the money.
For the money.
But, but I think it's the system, we got to put the system in place.
Yeah.
So we can, we already have the system, why can't we wait one more year and do it next year? I know they.
Next year will be the same thing as it was this year, wait till next year. We got it in place, do it, let's do it.
We have bigger, we have bigger albatross that we need to try and sell to this community, and we need their support.
Yeah, but that's.
I know, it's a drop in the hat, it's not the money, it's the message. I, I, that's just my point, I'm sorry, I'm not arguing with you, I'm not trying to be disrespectful.
No, and, but, but I, I think that, you know, Dr. Hayes put a lot of time into, he looked at the thing as very fair with everybody.
I agree.
And it's something which has been due for years.
Oh, more.
Why don't you just do it right now? You know, you know, we're not going to go out with any, we're not going to be left without a loaf of bread, or whatever, you know, it, it's only $9,700. But, but, but the, if, if you ever coached, and I coached, you're sometimes out there in the rain, and the cold, and the sleet, and.
Oh, I know, believe me, my husband coaches many teams right now.
I agree with you, it's not the money, but still, it's the system.
I, I know, it's a, they're not doing it for the money.
Yeah, we're the only one in the area without some kind of a system.
Well, we have a system, it's just 16 years outdated. No, but going back and being, I'm sorry.
I think Jim wanted to interject something.
Well, I just want to comment, I mean, I, I don't disagree with you, but, but in the scheme of things, one way or another, we've got to get down to a 192, 192.
Yeah.
And so it's, what, if, you know, again, if not this, then what? And so, you know, again, if you're not, if you're not willing to do personnel, obviously personnel ends up being big chunks of money.
Big numbers.
That's how you can get there quicker. Otherwise, you, you're pecking at the lower fruit, if you will, that are, that are only a few thousand dollars, and somehow you have to build all of those together to get yourself to a, to get yourself to that total. You know, somebody asked a question, I didn't answer it, about scholar supplies, and, yeah, I think we could make some movement in that, but it's certainly not a whole lot, but I.
Not like $50,000, or?
No, I mean.
We already cut them last year, if you're.
Yeah, we cut them, so we're moving in the wrong direction by cutting more, and, but, yeah, and somehow we got to, it's like negotiating contracts, somehow we got to get to the bottom line.
Well, you, you bring me to, to my next point, with regard to the, the coaches' salary or, um, um, schedule for compensation, which was that although it's not tied to the salary scale, there's kind of a, a keying in based on where individual lies, just, just to get kind of a, a, yeah, a, yeah, so, I, I'm kind of, in those discussions then, and I guess from my perspective, and I'll, I'll float this now, is I've, I kind of saw that riding out along at the same time as having a, having a contract to propose. So, would they kind of fit together in, in that way? But.
I don't know what to add up, they've all said different things.
Could you tell me what half-special ed building coordinator would be?
$49,800.
$49,800?
$49,828.
I guess, but before we get, you know, start drilling further into the numbers, I just want to acknowledge, you know, my outsider perspective, as being a school board member, not for, in my first year, I feel like I'm pretty connected to what our needs are, but I'm not an education expert. I mean, some of us are, you know, work in school districts, and have years of experience in education, but I feel, to a large extent, my role is kind of a higher level, and want to make sure everything's well considered, but want to give, give the superintendent, you know, he's, he's got to make it work, and, so, I, I guess I, I just, just going to say, I'm, I'm, I lean very heavy on, on the guy who is where the buck stops, in making sure that we're offering a, the best program we can for the money. So that's enough philosophy, I guess. So, and, you know, I guess it's, it's horse trading in an ugly way, but where you're keeping the data manager position, that, that tells me that you see there's, there's a high, obvious higher need for that position, rather than the, um, second grade teacher, or the half-time school-to-career position, or two paraprofessionals, you know, making some radical roundoffs, but.
I do, the data manager is a new job title, but when you look at the job description, a big piece of it is really tech support. And right now, we've got two full-time people doing tech support, and we're barely keeping our nostrils above the waterline, and so if you were to, they were to cut this, then we're really down to one, from my perspective, one tech support person. It was just my hope that this, this position could be, you know, you can reshape it, maybe reorganize the department a little bit, so that you now have that database coordination and reporting function with one resident person, but you still get that ability to do tech support that we're, we're just in desperate need of. I won't, I won't.
You don't even want to go there with me right now.
I don't want to go over today's conversation.
With block scheduling.
But it really creates a lot of hard feelings in this district, that we have terrible technology.
Well, I don't think any of, I mean, I said I wouldn't support cutting, you don't want to get rid of the data manager.
No, I do not.
So I don't think we even really need to bother, we're not worried about cutting that, so let's not, we, I, I think we all feel that it's very important to the mission, and, and keeping our people happy, so they're not pulling their hair out every day. I mean, it's hard enough to be in that building, you know, we got to give them something.
Well, it's like we talked about the other day at one of our meetings, I'm getting so confused of what meetings we're at lately, is just the inefficiency of AP, people running around trying to do the same job without the experience and without the time available. So we're paying lots of money for, I think, little impact.
Jim, did you, I sent you an email, and I know you've been busy, asking, do you remember about the numbers of other school districts, and how, how many people they have in their tech department? Did you, do you remember that?
I did see that email, I sent it on to Dan.
To Dan.
To get me that information, I know he was working on it, but he wasn't.
I just, I think that's important, I remember when Matt brought that up at one of our meetings last year, and just illuminated how many other people that other school districts have.
Yeah, they do.
Even similar to our school population. And, and we just, we're, if people hear that, I think it will help us sell that a little bit more.
Most districts have the one person who has the district-wide oversight, and then every building has a tech support person. And we don't have that.
And that, that's like the minimum of what most districts have.
That's a minimum.
Other districts have.
Some bigger schools with more higher population, and they'll have two.
I just, I would like to draw that.
I know.
Correlation for people, even at the deliberative session, if we need to talk about it, or something, I'd like to have that information.
Yeah, I'll ask Dan again.
So that we can bring that to light, because it is an important piece of our mission.
I guess we're, we're beating on the technology theme for the moment, but granted, we've got our, more than our fair share of 10-year-old hardware, but we don't, it's not all terribly old, you know, we've, all of our teaching staff and administrators have laptops at this point in time, and the infrastructure's not working so that they can use them effectively. So I guess one thing that, you know, I, I think, I think I'm on board with, was it Meg, with using some of our capital reserve money for technology, but I'm, I'm hesitant to buy a lot of equipment that's going to connect to a network that's not up to, up to par. I want to make sure we make our investments in that first, so that the hardware that we have already is, is flying right before we further tax a bottlenecked system. So I'm, I guess I'm thinking we, if we, if we move the new equipment, technology piece to that capital reserve fund.
Mm-hmm.
Deducted from here.
Where will they put the tech?
Well, so we have $61,000.
He wasn't planning on cutting that.
That's right.
At all, so do we?
So I'm, I'm suggesting that we.
Oh, so he can reallocate that money somewhere else.
That we, the board take action at a later time to move the money from the technology capital reserve fund, which is, which is the request that the Budget Committee had.
Which there's $61,904 in. Yeah, I, I agree with that. I mean, well, how, this whole, like, tonight, what, do we have to motion everything we do? Like, what is the?
I don't think we're there that, I, I do, not that I want another night out with you guys, but.
Oh, come on!
I think we need another meeting.
Well, it's, it's fortunate Linda's not here either, and I really would like to hear her.
It would be good to have her involved.
Will we do it on Monday, since we already have efficiencies? So it would just be, because that's at six.
Yeah, Monday is what, the 20, what?
Twenty.
Does it come after the 26th?
Twenty-third, I can't be on Monday.
Twenty-third, no. Maybe the 30th?
After the Budget Committee meeting?
Yeah, don't we have to? I think it may make sense.
But don't we have to give the Budget Committee our bottom line, that we are in fact going to cut the 192?
Well, let me ask you this, can I ask this question? And it's, it's not because I'm being flippant, and I'm thinking, but are we required to reduce this budget by $192,000 because they asked us to?
I think you are required.
We are.
And I have to have the information to post with the warrant, every, I have to post all the cost centers, so, I mean, you have to make a decision where you're going to cut.
So we do have to bring our budget down, it's not like they make a recommendation.
That's my understanding, Jim, isn't that yours, your understanding?
It's, it's not our budget right now, it's the Budget Committee's budget.
Okay.
So we need to honor the number that they came to, and using our perspective, leaning on these guys to make sure we don't shoot ourselves in both feet.
So, Cliff, if you were to, where would you use that $25,000 to?
I would, I would take the money from the.
You know what, I know that.
In the budget, where would you offset it? What would you use it?
In this cut, how would you put it back?
What would I put back in?
Yes.
What's this, I'm sorry, I kind of missed some of that.
I'm proposing that we, we get, use $25,000 from our technology capital reserve money.
Right.
To backfill for removing the technology new equipment deduction.
Yeah.
And you want, and, and Chat wanted to know if we.
If I do that, what?
Where else, what, what's?
What would you use it for?
You going to swap it out for, what's he going to put that $25,000 towards, so that we don't have to cut something?
As opposed to what's on the list, yeah. Let me, uh, see, let me try and capture some of the thinking, and I know it's not everybody's maybe, but if I've done this right, if you, if you stay with my recommendation for the administrator raises, you cut the coaches, you cut driver's ed, you do this $25,000 in technology, I'll slow down so you can take notes.
She's, she's up with you.
No, I know, I don't mean her, I meant these guys, I can see these guys over here taking notes, too. And, and I, I don't know how, I don't know how enough of you feel about this, but I included in my calculation, this movement to 20% for non-union personnel, the 28, 125.
Keep that?
No, I'm saying, I'm giving you a list of cuts that adds up to 192, 192.
So you'd put that back in?
I'm not recommending it.
No.
I'm just trying to.
Sure.
Give you a scenario, and then maybe you can work from the scenario.
Okay.
Okay? So let's say you did put that back in, Kelly, you were really the only one who responded about that, I don't know the others either way. If you, let's see, and I already said the technology, so then if you, the painting and carpeting, if you almost cut it in half, cut 9, 9094.
Could we take that out of the maintenance trust fund? It's only 9,000, it's not going to break.
Yeah, you could, but look at what we're up against.
I know, but we even said.
I wouldn't touch that.
It's going to, what we have to do is going to completely take that entire account.
It's possible, yeah.
I think that.
So.
I think we're talking a six-figure.
We're talking a lot of money, so.
Right.
I mean, we can't depend on that to fix what we're in on, so.
And, we got a boiler.
Well, right.
That's on the back of our minds, so.
So I, I wouldn't, I mean.
I'm not, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, you know, that we keep, you know, we, in the budget, we then keep, you know, 8,000, whatever it is, but, but it's, in other words, cut the $18,000 request by $9,094. That's what I'm suggesting.
Okay.
Okay? Something that, Joan reminded me while you were talking, we, we had talked about it in a meeting with administrators, is if we cut the sped tuition line, and I've used a number of $40,000, and we all know the element of risk that that adds, but we're out there already in elements of risk.
But we have $255,000 in the special ed.
I know that, no, I know that, but, you know, one or two kids can.
I know, I know.
Devastate you, but in any case.
But I would also add that it was budgeted appropriately, I, no one took note of that when they went through the budget, but it was budgeted at 250 last year and this year. When I did the revised budget, I upped it to 400, because that's what we're at right now, and I budgeted next year for 400. So I don't feel like we not budgeted properly, so we would be budgeted at 360, and we would hit the trust fund. So you would still have over 200,000 in the trust fund, and if you had move-ins, you'd still have opportunity. In other years, we haven't budgeted properly, like, this year, we didn't budget properly. We didn't project out the new ones, we had some people move in after the budget was passed and stuff, but I feel like at 400, we're budgeted safely.
Okay. What else?
Um, okay, leaving off from there.
Sorry.
Staying with the cut of two paraprofessionals. Staying with the cut of two paraprofessionals, and then adding in a building sped coordinator at half salary, or half-time. That's forty-nine, eight-twenty-eight. And if I did my math up, it, it all adds up to one-ninety-two, one-ninety-two. Oh, and, and, excuse me, and the drama Lego stipends at two thousand dollars.
Are we going to cut the teachers, second grade teacher?
I jumped over that, and I jumped over school to career coordinator, because I didn't...
Are you going to cut it?
No, he was saying...
No, you're going to do what you're going to do. I'm just telling you...
He's giving us a different scenario.
He's giving us a scenario.
Give me a different scenario. I'm trying to listen to what you're saying and say, okay, let's put that out there, and maybe that's a starting point, again, for discussion. So, yeah. I mean, you know, personally, again, the one that's most distasteful in there is, is this 20% health insurance shift, and, and again, only Kelly really weighed in on that.
I don't agree with that.
Yeah.
I don't agree with having them taking a pay decrease. No, I don't agree with that.
Yeah. So, so anyway, but I mean, so that's a, that's a piece that's there, and maybe you solve that by doing a little more sped tuition, and you do scholar supplies. And trying to whittle things down to what I think you're in tune with. So if you're not in tune with the twenty-eight, one-twenty-five, then we'd have to find that in some other fashion. And if you're in tune with the, you know, the building sped coordinator at halftime, well, that's, that's a big jump. And the sped tuition, we've got a good cushion there, but we all know the risk we add when we walk down that road, that's all. So...
Go ahead.
I think moving towards that 20% health insurance is a, is a goal for us. I mean, we need to move everybody in that direction. Just putting that on the record.
Right, right.
Go ahead.
Move everybody, is what I heard you say.
Well, I think just, I think we need to do it in a thoughtful way, like, moving people to pay more for their health insurance. I totally support that.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, it does a lot of things, including helping us be less exposed to unanticipated changes in what the total premium is. But I don't want to, I don't want to see some of the staff see that kind of pay cut in, in order to create parity on that percentage, but more disparity with other employees of, you know, within the boundaries of the town of Newmarket. So I, I'm not ready to, to make that reduction.
Okay.
The, with changing the number of paraprofessionals, feeling like there's potentially more risk with, if we don't have the right level of specialized coordinators in order to peer for, in IP, so that we've got, we don't have disparity, that's one of the risks, right? If we don't have the right staff at, in these IP interactions, there's chance that we could be accused of not offering comparable services among our kids, right?
Yeah, and I've also seen it work in the reverse, because it's, in difficult meetings, it's hard to say no. So in order to pacify a difficult situation, sometimes you say, yes, I'll provide you X amount of whatever service, whatever specialized service, just to sort of move that meeting along.
Move on.
Yeah. And I think it, you know, it takes a certain level of finesse and ability to run a good meeting, but it also takes that confidence when it comes to the law, and what, sort of your bottom line is what you need to do, bottom line legally, and what's right for the kid. So I think it's a pretty complicated process doing it often.
Good luck.
Thanks.
Bye, Melissa.
Bye.
So, I think I did my math wrong. I think I'm higher than the one-ninety-two.
Oh.
So how do you want to move backwards?
Okay.
You would not do the 20% health insurance?
I guess, yeah, I guess.
Correct? Right heard?
Right. I would not at this point. That would be a goal in the future when we have...
You just had a conversation, I didn't quite catch all of it, about the...
It was about the...
I guess, I worry about exposure to larger expenses if we don't have enough building specialized support.
That was a recommendation by the director. That was a recommendation by Jean.
Oh, for pairs, you mean?
That was her recommendation.
I mean, she obviously must feel that she...
She pulled all the IPs again.
She can still provide what she needs. And, believe me, I'm not advocating for getting rid of the people, but...
I mean, you can always, if there was an added need, once school started again, you can hit the trust fund more.
See, my, my worry isn't the specialized kids. They're going to be covered by law, because Jean knows her stuff. She pulls the hours, she analyzes what needs to be done, so that's going to be, it's, and maybe the RTI model isn't, is ineffective or inefficient right now at the elementary school, but I do feel that those kids that are at risk, and that if we can prevent the need for special, I just worry about those kids that are teetering, and if we don't support them, then they may slide into specialized, which is a bad thing.
Right. And, which is kind of why I'm uncomfortable with the second-grade teacher going away, because it's those K through three years that, yeah, I'm trying to talk about like I'm an educator, but from what I've read, I understand that, you know, it's the whole learning to read and then reading to learn piece, and at age, at grade three, there's a pretty clear understanding of who's going to be successful, and if we can catch those kids, if we cannot lose them by having smaller class sizes, we're, we're going to be saving money later.
And I think, like, we think of it, or at least when I was going to school, you know, you sit down, the teacher teaches the same lesson to all the kids, no matter what your learning style or need is. Well, that, those days are gone. So now the teacher is doing differentiated instruction in the classroom. So she's, she or he is creating, you know, different lessons for eighteen, sixteen different kids in the class, so it's not just one lesson plan in the same manner, in the same fashion. So it's, it's much more complicated than it used to be when I was there.
Have you cut one position?
What's that?
Cut one there.
Yeah.
Can, can we just go down through the list and see how we all agree? For example, administrative raises, do we all agree to leave it there? I think we got to get moving here, we've got all this thing now.
I don't, but I'm the only one, so I would be able to, which is fine.
Yeah, I'd like to take Jim's recommendation on that one.
All right.
I would, too.
And the stipend for the coaches?
You know what I mean.
You people, I'd go along with whatever you people want to choose.
Sadly, I think I need, it needs to go.
I do, too.
Which does?
All right.
The coaches' stipend change.
Yeah.
The contingency is staying.
Yes, for me.
We all agreed to that. Driver's ed is gone.
Yeah, that's a given.
And the data managed position, no question we're keeping.
Yes.
But in my calculation, that twenty-five thousand for tech ed equipment was in my last list.
So those we, we're not going to talk about anymore?
No.
Good, yeah.
All right, we've divided the problem. Thank you, math instructor.
Yeah, that's where we do it.
Moving this process along.
Ride and conquer.
Health insurance, you want to keep it as it is?
I do at this point.
All right.
Me, too.
All right. Kelly?
No, but, that's all right.
Okay, I'll, I'll keep it.
Majority rolls.
Yeah. How about technology? We're going to cut it to nine, to nine, no, we're going to, we're going to do away with it, because we're going to take it back.
Or take it out of the trust fund.
Yes.
Yeah, so that's twenty-five, yeah.
And the painting and carpeting at the high school, we'll do as Jim suggests.
About eight thousand?
Yeah, cut it down to nine thousand, ninety-four dollars. Is that what it is, Jim?
Cut nine thousand and ninety-four dollars, yes, that's what I had.
And we'll keep the rest, which would be about, almost nine thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, I'll go with that. Second grade teacher?
No.
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 Right.
Okay on that one? All right. School to career?
I don't agree we should cut it. But no one else seems willing to talk about it.
No.
Yeah, I'm not ready to talk about it.
Let's, let's leave it there for a minute, all right? Let's leave it.
I would say yes at this point.
To cut it?
Mm-hmm.
Let's just leave it for a minute.
That's fine.
In the pairs, how many pairs would you want to keep? Keep them both, cut one, or cut two?
Jean has indicated that...
She could cut two.
She can do two?
Let's cut two.
And two.
Okay, we'll cut those. And the Legos is taken care of, Jim says that right there will be, will be, won't be an issue. So at this point, we'll keep school to career then.
Well, what about, you have to offset that with something else, so people both...
Okay, Jim, how would that add up?
One second. You...
That's what I want to do, I want to get it added.
You, in my list, when I went through it, I included halftime building sped coordinator. You're not including that on your list, is that right?
No, we didn't touch that. We want to see what the numbers would come to.
Without that?
Yeah, without that.
Without that? Okay, let me get rid of that.
Keep the school to career.
I hear you.
Keep the cut or keep the position?
Keep the cut, you mean.
Keep the position.
Keep the position.
Keep the position.
Eliminate the cut. That's the problem, we're talking two different languages.
Right, right. What, what would you, what would you cut? Again, I gave you a cut list, the buildings...
I want to know what our cut list is.
And that's what you just went through, is what would you support as cut?
Yeah, we're going to go back to, we're going to leave, we're going to cut the administrative raises...
The way you suggested.
By the twenty, I get that, yeah.
We're going to leave, we're going to cut the stipends for the coaches, that's going to...
I got all those, yeah.
We're going to leave the contingency, we're going to cut the driver's ed, we're going to leave the data general, which is the data manager.
Yeah.
We're going to keep the 20 health insurance, non-union personnel.
Yeah, right.
We're going to keep the, we're going to cut the technology, because we're going to pick it up somewhere else.
Right, I got that, yeah.
And we're going to cut the carpet, the painting and carpeting to nine thousand, ninety-four dollars, cut nine, that much out. And we're going to keep the second-grade teacher, and we're going to cut the pair, the pairs.
But we're going to keep the school to career coordinator for the...
At this point, we want to see what he, what he gets.
Okay, and do that. What about the forty thousand in sped tuition?
I like that as an option.
Yeah.
I do, too.
That's an option.
Okay.
A little bit more risk there, I think is not so bad.
I get that, I get that. All right, so let's see, if I heard you right, wish I had my computer here.
And also, remember that the Warren article was passed last year, that if there is surplus at the end of this year, which, with all our problems, probably, but if there is, you have money, more money going into the trust funds.
For this year.
At the end of this year.
At the end of this year.
If there's any money left.
That's true.
I don't know. I projected there would be, but before the ceilings.
Well, he's figuring that out. If we, the four of us decides, school to career, who, you'd want to keep it?
Yes.
You'd say, cut it.
I'm leaning towards cutting it, yes.
But I want to keep it, and I want to reduce the specialized building coordinator if I have.
Okay, but, no, I just want, just want for the position.
Okay.
Just forget the money. You'd want to keep it? You'd want to keep it?
I want to see what, if we keep it, what are we losing?
Okay.
I want, I need a sense of...
I feel the same way.
You know, which side of the...
See the impact.
Okay, yeah, all right.
What do you want to do with it?
Well, I, I feel the same way. If we, if we have to, if we have to cut something I don't want to cut, then I would cut that.
That's really what it comes down to.
Clear to me.
You can tell it's 10 o'clock at night and...
I know!
Well, we got to keep going.
That number turns out to be higher than one-ninety-two, one-two, in other words, cutting more by a figure of nineteen thousand, eight-hundred-seventy-three dollars.
All right.
So in other words, you could give back to the budget nineteen, eight, seventy-three somehow.
That's for keeping the school to career.
Pardon me?
That's for keeping the school to career.
That's keeping school to career as a cut?
No.
Oh, it's a cut!
No.
No, they took, keep her as a, keep the position. I know.
Yeah.
Position.
Keep the position.
And what about, and what about the building sped coordinator at halftime?
That, we'll talk, see how much, how much over we're going to be with that school to career.
Oh, so take both of those out of the equation?
No, we, no, we want to just leave them aside for a minute.
Leave them aside, okay, I get that language, okay. So if I, let's see.
Do you want me to take the calculator back?
You know, you'd be better on a computer, because then you have it permanent, you know what I mean?
You got a battery, or?
I'm in two and two, oh, six, five...
I'm not out of battery.
Minus forty-three, two, eight, nine.
You know, we could, we could...
Okay, if, if I do that, then what I get, and I'll have Joan plug it into our spreadsheet somewhere, I get one-sixty-eight, seven, seven, six, which if I subtract one-nine-two, whoops, clear entry, one-nine-two, one-nine-two, I get twenty-three thousand, four-hundred-and-sixteen dollars more needed to be cut.
And we need to cut twenty-three thousand more.
Joan, you got to plug it into your spreadsheet.
This is where you could, this is where you could use your, you could use your sped tuition line, and all, or your, your half-specialized coordinator. We'll let you go ahead and do whatever you want with that.
Well, there's already an adjustment made for sped tuition. Is there?
Right, the forty thousand is already in there, but you could...
Or do scholar supplies minus twenty.
Add twenty, I think what he's saying is add another twenty, ten thousand to the spec tuition, sped tuition.
Yeah.
I mean, I know you don't want to go too far into that.
I don't want to go too far.
You could fi, you could finalize that with, we got...
Right, or split it up, I guess I might think of splitting it up three ways between sped tuition...
Right.
Maybe a little more out of the technology fund, and then scholar supplies.
And then next year, and we're almost certain it's going to probably happen, is the school to career coordinator is probably going to have to go if we get in this situation again.
Yeah.
We're not going to be able to cut teachers anymore.
I know.[1581.15] I know.
I just don't know why people don't feel like that's a...
I know, but what are you gonna do, Kelly?
The program is valuable, we just think it can be done in other ways.
We could probably keep it another year.
Yeah. Let Joan double check the...
It's a different part of our population that it offers things to, and those kids will get lost sometimes.
Kelly, I'm involved with SSD, I know how important, yeah.
I know, it just...
I know how important it all is. I'm also involved at child school over there.
One sixty-eight, seven, seven, seven. Okay, that's what you wrote down?
Is that what you got, and I wrote?
Yeah, one sixty-eight, seven, seven, six.
Six, right, is that what you got?
Yeah.
Yeah, quite a buck.
It would be too difficult.
So, and then if you subtract it from the one ninety-two, one ninety-two, you get twenty-three, four, sixteen.
A halftime special ed coordinator, even for a year.
So...
And see what that, and that way we don't lose anything. We keep the school to career halftime, it's already halftime as it is.
Yeah.
We cut half of it last year. We would still have a special ed building coordinator part-time, and maybe, we'll see how it works, see if it is as in casual.
That's what I'm saying, we would do that.
I don't hear either of these two saying anything about that position.
Oh, I see.
Kind of the quietness that I'm...
I'm listening to the pros and cons.
I like the way you two fight.
Twenty-three, four, sixteen.
You let us get ourselves out there, then you can sit back.
Well, I guess in my mind, there are two different administrative positions that serve different functions.
Technology.
That, um, serve a vulnerable population in kind of, in two different areas, so...
Divvy that up between...
You know, and I have a special ed plant, and I'm trying not to, you know, I'm trying to be open-minded, and then I see Jim's recommendation, like, but I, going back to Cliff's statement earlier about, they made recommendations for a reason, not that we necessarily need to agree with them all, because I think as a board, we have, we have to.
That guy, come on.
That's a hard question.
Right, right.
Okay.
Can you throw me one of those highlighters?
Sure can.
We're losing it.
You know, let me tell you something.
Thank you.
I just got out of a meeting over there with the child school. The union sixteen is cutting them from three hundred thousand that they're given for their students in the child school, and cutting a hundred and fifty thousand out, just like that. And also, they're losing, they're losing, I think pretty close to two hundred thousand more monies, that they're gonna have to find somewhere, over three hundred and fifty thousand, if you can cut that, a hundred and forty students.
I know.
How the hell they gonna do it?
Yeah, come on.
But you know what they said? We're gonna do it, if we have to stand out there in tents.
Jim, can you, um, can you outline?
One more time?
No, this is a different question. It's kind of an unfair, but none of this is fair to anybody. How we would provide the school to career program without that position? More reliance on the guidance department? Is there room there to do that, or, can you speak to that at all?
Yeah, it's been, obviously it's been distributed amongst other people, and even within departments, English department as an example. And I think we just have to rely more on them, those individuals, and probably, yeah, it does find its way into guidance. But also, I think the person who has really filled the void, you may remember, to a great extent, yeah, has been the transition coach, if you know, in special ed, and she really has stepped up, and clearly that's a skill set that she has, and so I think, I think that's where it may fall more. You know, I think, you know, to make it happen, we may have to go out and maybe seek some volunteer help to help her, and I think that might be able to be achieved.
She has a full-time position now, is that what it is?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, I couldn't remember.
Transition coach, and she does a terrific job, and I think she's picked up a lot of the slack of having lost the full-time coordinator. So did that come out right?
Yep, so you wanted me to read the list?
Yeah.
Oh, please, I need to.
These are cuts.
Can you give us a printout, hard copy?
Let's go slowly, please.
Go slowly.
Administrative raises, twenty thousand, four hundred thirty-one dollars. Coaches' salary changes, nine thousand, seven hundred fourteen dollars. I'm so tired, I can't even read it anymore.
I'm following you, Joan, if you fall down, I'll pick you up.
My numbers are all mixed up, okay. Driver's ed, ten thousand dollars. Technology equipment, Jim asked me to add six thousand to the twenty-five thousand we cut, hit the trust fund if we need to.
So that's thirty-one.
That would be a cut of thirty-one thousand.
Thirty-one.
Okay.
We would lean on the trust fund to do it.
The painting and carpeting at the high school, now, nine thousand and ninety-four dollars. Nine, yeah, nine thousand, ninety-four dollars. Increase the sped trust dependence, I guess, or the cut would be fifty thousand.
Sped tuition.
Sped tuition.
Would be what number?
Cut would be fifty thousand instead of forty thousand. Cut two paraprofessionals for a total of fifty-two thousand, five hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Cut the Lego stipends for two thousand dollars. And cut scholar supplies, I assume, just divide it in half by the schools, for a total district-wide of seven thousand, four hundred and sixteen dollars. And that gives you a total of the one ninety-two, one ninety-two.
So it keeps the second grade teacher, keeps school to career.
All right, I agree with all that.
Keeps the, uh, the building coordinators full-time.
Keeps our building coordinator. Next year's another year, you know?
I know.
So the...
You gotta be thinking that.
Well, you know, I don't know if there's anybody still watching at home at ten past ten, but you can see if they're watching, the pain of trying to get to these budget numbers, and every year it's gonna get leaner and leaner, and tougher and tougher. You're right, the decisions we're avoiding now, may be the next year's decisions.
The child school meeting I just attended, they're already looking at that budget.
Yeah.
They're already started.
Yeah.
The painting, so you weren't thinking of taking that out of the trust fund? That's just gonna be...
No, to me, that's just a cut, because I look at that trust fund as, as unanticipated consequences. It's not routine stuff, so it's just shortening down, maybe we paint less rooms, or we don't do the carpeting, I'll let the principal decide what's best need, but it's just shrinking the pool of money to do some job, so. But that's, to me, to me, we need that, that trust fund, or things like what I explained tonight, or a boiler going down, or, you know, in this job so far, it's wait till next week, you know? And you don't know what next week's gonna bring up.
So this, but this cut equals two bodies, two people, two full-time FTEs.
In terms of people, it's two paraprofessionals, yes.
Which, in reality, Nina, I know it's hard to cut positions, but we have a lot of turnover, so it may not be that we tell somebody they don't have a job, it may be that people resign, people get teaching jobs, so I mean, we have a tremendous amount of turnover.
It would helpful, would it be helpful to know that eventually?
We can tell you that, I mean, but we do have resignations.
Like, how it ends up shaking out so that, you know, because it, we, I don't know, I have to go home at night.
Last year we cut people, and we ended up recalling them, because other people quit over the summer. So we don't give them a letter in April saying they have a job, but we recalled at least, I can think right off the bat, one, right off the bat with pairs, and we cut a few pairs last year, but then we had resignations. A lot of the pairs are trying to get teaching jobs.
Right, and oftentimes you don't hear about them until August, to be honest with you. It's not a decision you could really say with clarity in May.
So could we, um, I don't know, this just seems important to me, you know, we, last year, we cut some positions, I'm gonna call them positions. Then we had the whole retirement thing, and we had to cut more. Now we're, so could we keep a running total, so that when...
Yeah.
When we go to these meetings, and people look at us like we're not doing anything, I want to keep reminding them of, and they'll ask us, and we'll say, well, we think we cut five, and I think it's my fault too, I haven't kept track, but those people, those numbers equate to bodies that we let go.
We have, we have that just in the budget documents from last year.
It's easily captured, I just didn't have time to do it. When I was asked the question, I remembered five point five.
I knew five point five.
The original budget, but after that, I really wasn't sure whether it ended up being two or three more, so I didn't want to say a number.
I just want to be able to keep reiterating that, that we, that we are doing stuff to our budget, and it equates to people adding to the unemployment that we already have. But I'm comfortable with these cuts.
Good.
I don't know, is, what about everyone else?
Thank you, Jim.
You're welcome.
And Joan.
You're welcome.
What about you?
Anyone else, I'm with you.
Your consensus around that?
I'm comfortable with that, that's the word.
Can we run it by, like, Linda will be brought up to speed, I imagine.
She said she was gonna try to watch tonight's meeting, so.
All right.
She'll email me, I'm sure, and I can send her the list.
Because I do value her opinion too.
Yes. This at least enables, well, we don't have to have another meeting, and it enables me to do the posts, to be able to post the budget, because that has to be posted next, oh, a week from Monday.
Okay.
We could've had a meeting on the twenty-eighth, that's sad to...
Yeah.
Need to go along.
You might not have a full complement of this table.
We'll have it at Joan's place.
Okay.
Oh, God, have we worked through that?
All right, so, yeah, I think we're done with that, we'll see what Linda has to say, but I think we're done with that, which is a good thing, thank you, and we'll make it work.
So we don't need to take an official vote, or we're just supporting that, okay?
But at some point, though, we need to take official vote on the whole of the warrant.
Yes, you will.
And...
I'm not sure we are ready to do that.
Because Article One has a lot of X's instead of numbers.
I know, and that's why I suggested we may need...
I have another two.
Another meeting, and I really feel like it might be more right up, butted up against the end of the month. I think you have till January thirtieth, and I could see it potentially being on the thirtieth, especially if the budget committee's meeting on the, you know, you know, quite honestly, I mean, you know, quite honestly, you know, the budget committee's meeting on the, if I understood them the other night, they're meeting on the twenty-sixth, but if I understood the other night, they, don't they still have to vote as a group around those hundred and ninety-two, one ninety-two? I mean, they come back and say, it's not, it's a hundred and fifty, they may come back and...
Oh, who, the budget committee?
Budget committee, right?
Oh, after listening to the public hearing?
Right, after the public hearing.
Yeah, they're not, they're not done, they have to front that number.
But we've already, at least, if they stick to it.
If that's where they are, we know where we are, but they may, you never know. Make it better, make it worse, so we have to...
Oh, God.
So that's why, that's one of the reasons why I think there's gotta be a meeting after them, just, at least we put one on the books, just in case.
Which one do you want to pick, twenty-eighth?
I, no, I've got some, I'm busy that night.
It's Saturday.
Oh, that afternoon, whatever, I'm busy.
Who is morning?
But I don't know, I don't have my calendar, and I left it up in my office, but I was...
You don't have too much time.
No, I realize that, I was thinking the thirtieth, Monday night.
Thirtieth is fine with me.
I have to post the budget that day.
You do on that day.
Yeah.
I have to prepare it.
Well...
How about the twenty-seventh on a Friday?
Look at your face.
Why don't you have a meeting following the budget meeting?
All right.
Yeah.
I mean, we might as well stay here till eleven o'clock that night.
We'd upstairs.
And we get it done on the twenty-sixth.
We'll meet upstairs after the budget meeting.
Are we all going to the budget meeting?
I am.
I planned on it, I planned on it.
I would think, so, yeah, we'll meet after, we'll post it for after.
So what is that, that's June?
Twenty-sixth. Twenty-sixth.
So we'll meet after that, on the twenty-sixth, okay?
That's another night out. Please.
So that'll get posted for...
Immediately following, yeah, I guess you're just posting for immediately following the budget.
Yeah, we did that the last time, I think we posted it for nine, and then had another comment about immediately after.
So the budget committee is at seven that night?
That's seven.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Okay.
Wow.
Oh, we still have an agenda.
Pardon me?
What's that?
Jen's so thrilled.
You expect me to explain the bonds?
Yeah, I've been doing this since four o'clock.
At this point?
That'd be a good idea, because I can't even think of what my name is.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna suggest, I mean, you guys can...
We could table some of them.
I'm gonna suggest that, that we take a look at the warrant, we're still not ready to warrant, but I want to make some brief comments about it, and see if you have any.
All right.
Um, we table the rest up until we do have to nominate a teacher for a math teacher, and then it'll be a very brief...
Let's do it right now.
Well, let's go through, let's look, we're right at the, at the warrant, all right?
Let's finish looking at the warrant.
Yeah.
The warrant, Article One, somebody brought up the other night some perhaps rewording in the third line of Article One, because it specifically states, "For the construction of a new junior, senior high school facility," and they were concerned that, you know, some people don't necessarily that, see that site as a facility. So with that in mind, I came back and I looked at it, and I, I thought to myself, the wording is, is, maybe it gives that implication, but it clearly is appropriate, no matter where your school is, if your school's on one side of the street or the other, you still need the land, and I think people agree on that. But if you want to wordsmith that, or if you want me to ask the attorney to wordsmith that, I will, but...
Do you have a suggestion, or are you just...
No, I, to me, I'd stay with the language, because the intent is to buy that, and whether we build it, I mean, obviously, I believe we build it on the new property, but for those who believe you don't, and build where the current site is, then, then they seem to be understanding that if you do that, you've still got to have the property across the street.
So, yeah.
So one way or another, you're getting to a new school.
It's part of the campus, if you will.
That's how I look at it, that's how I'd be presenting it at a deliberative, that one way or another, you're moving towards a new school, and the question is, which side of the street is it?
But you still need that property to do it.
Still need the property to do both, so that was why I didn't put in any change of wording.
I'm fine with it.
I'm fine with it.
Okay.
Yep.
Article two stays the same, Article three stays the same.
Article two won't stay the same if our budget changes.
No, this number, I think, reflects our budget, doesn't it?
It reflects the new budget, but it has the food service and the grants in there. That has to be part of the warrant article, so it looks higher than it is. But if the budget committee changes and lowers our budget, or makes it higher...
So this number reflects the one ninety-two, one ninety-two?
Correct.
All right.
With the food service and grants added in.
But if they, if they make it worse, then we'll have to adjust it.
Then that would have to be adjusted.
Or if they add something, God knows.
Right, maybe they'll add to our budget.
The question, which is always asked, is why is the default budget higher? So we should have an answer for that.
Oh, you guys know what that is, right? Maybe not right now, but...
It's because everything that was in the current budget has to stay, right?
Everything they have, yeah, continue, and then things that you have commitments for.
It's all about the commitments.
Yeah, those two things, you know, it's a...
Okay.
But know the commitments, I guess, is what I'd like to suggest.
Know those ahead of time.
Well, that's all on the MS whatever, twenty-something.
Be prepared to answer that question, is all what we're saying, because...
Well, as long as it's not asked at ten twenty-five at night, after a day like we had today, it'd be fine.
It's gonna come up.
So, let me, okay, it's coming up, so let's go to Article four and five. Those are as-is, but I am gonna caution you right now that I am not a hundred percent certain of what the total amount it will be in that expansion of school facilities capital reserve fund.
Right.
So these may have to be adjusted when we come back on the twenty-sixth, to look at what money we really have.
Okay.
Okay?
Did you skip over three?
Uh, no, I just slid right past it, I guess it stays the same, is what I'd say.
Was there, what did you think about the idea of changing the word "and" to "or"? I'm just asking, I'm not saying it's necessary.
I take it as it's for the two, it is for one of the two purposes when I say "and," so that, I mean, I think that was language the attorney gave. I don't know that "or" really changes it.
If you say "or," if you, it makes it mutually exclusive.
Yeah, it makes it look like you're gonna do one or the other.
Okay, all right, I was just curious.
And the reality is, you may end up doing a little one, a lot of another.
That's fine.
Okay, so there's warrant.
Okay.
So, fast forward, I've got...
Lori Becker.
I hope I've got information in here on the math teacher.
Lori Becker.
All right, Lori Decker, I interviewed her as a finalist, and she was... Becker, I'm sorry. And...
I was gonna read it.
Terrific, you know, it's good experience, especially in the skill sets that we look for in our new math teachers, so I'm really, really pleased, she comes out of Rochester with great recommendations,